Thank you. I'm going to open the special session of the Eagle Mountain Community Facilities District Board. Roll call, please, Bev. Sorry. Okay. Bev, are we ready? No.
Oh, she heard. Heard in the corner.
Roll call whenever you're ready.
Chairman Kavanaugh.
Here.
Board Member Yates.
Present.
Board Member Legay.
Here.
Board Member Brown.
Here.
Vice Chair Hanson.
Here.
Board Member Elke.
Here.
Board Member Dickey.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Have any speaker cards? No, Mayor. Okay. Consideration of approving the Eagle Mountain Community Facilities District Board meeting minutes of June 20, 2013. There is no staff report on that. Can I get a motion to approve? Six twenty thirteen minutes.
Mayor's second.
Okay. And let's go with all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chairman seven zero. Thank you. For items two and three, there is one staff report. I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing regarding resolution EMCFD 2014-01, approving the tentative budget of the district for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2014, and ending June 30, 2015, setting a hearing date for the budget and annual assessments. Ken.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council. The Eagle Mountain Community Facilities District was formed by the town council in 1996 with the purpose of constructing infrastructure of the Eagle Mountain subdivision. The town council serves as the governing board of the district, and the annual expenditures for the district are for repayment of those bonds for that infrastructure that were issued to pay for the subdivision. The annual cost is repaid through an ad valorem tax and collected from the property owners of that within that district. And levy is estimated to be $1.60 per 100 assessed valuation. And that's compared to $1.84 last year, so it's gone down.
Okay, thank you, Ken. Any questions from council for Ken? Any comments from the council? Any speaker cards? No, Mayor. All right. And I will close the public hearing. Consideration of resolution EMCFD 2014-01 as just presented. Any further board discussion? No? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now I will open the special session of the Cottonwood Maintenance District Board. Roll call, please, Bev. Chairman Kavanaugh.
Here.
Board Member Dickey.
Here.
Board Member Brown.
Here.
Board Member Yates.
Present.
Vice Chair Hanson.
Here.
Board Member Elke.
Here.
And Board Member Legay.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Any speaker cards on this? No. Okay. Consideration of approving the Cottonwood Maintenance District Board meeting minutes of June 20, 2013. There is no staff report. Can I get a motion to approve the six twenty thirteen minutes?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any speaker cards? No. Okay, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For items two and three, there is one staff report. Open the public hearing. Public hearing regarding resolution CMD 2014-01, approving the tentative budget of the district for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2014, and ending June 30, 2015, and setting a hearing date for the budget and annual assessments. Ken.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council. The Cottonwoods Maintenance District was formed by the town council in 1999 for the purposes of improving common areas of the Cottonwoods subdivision. The town council serves as the governing board of the district, and the maintenance district provides for the maintenance of the common area which performed by the town of Fountain Hills. The annual cost is repaid through an annual property tax assessment of $83.15, which is the same as last year, per property levied to the town and collected by Maricopa County. The estimated levy includes the annual contract costs for landscaping, as well as established reserved amount for future exterior wall maintenance.
Okay, thank you, Ken. Board members, any comments or questions? No? Any speaker cards? No? Okay. Then I will close the public hearing. Consideration of resolution CMD 2014-01, approving the tentative budget of the district for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2014, and ending June 30, 2015, and setting a hearing date for the budget and annual assessments. Ken.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council. The Cottonwoods Maintenance District was formed by the town council in 1999 for the purposes of improving common areas of the Cottonwoods subdivision. The town council serves as the governing board of the district, and the maintenance district provides for the maintenance of the common area which performed by the town of Fountain Hills. The annual cost is repaid through an annual property tax assessment of $83.15, which is the same as last year, per property levied to the town and collected by Maricopa County. The estimated levy includes the annual contract costs for landscaping, as well as established reserved amount for future exterior wall maintenance.
Okay, thank you, Ken. Board members, any comments or questions? No? Any speaker cards? No? Okay. Then I will close the public hearing. Consideration of resolution CMD 2014-01 as just presented. Any further board discussion? If not, can I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. There we are. Now we are up to our regular session. Hold the regular session to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. And Parish Associate Reverend Stan Jones from Fountain Hills Presbyterian Church, thank you for joining us tonight.
You're welcome. I invite you to join me in prayer. Great God, our source of life and our source of light, we give thanks to you for these servants of our town who have dedicated themselves to calling forth the best possible future for all of us. Many of us here pray very often, "Thy will be done on earth." May the deliberations tonight be a piece of that, your spirit prevailing, genuine listening to opinions different than ours, a rare sense of kinship with one another, the capacity to recognize a better idea than the one we walked in with, an ego subordinate to the greater good. God, for your sake and for our sake, enable this meeting to be an expression of the higher reaches of our humanity. I ask in the name of the great cloud of witnesses who have gone before us and given a lift to humanity, and especially to that carpenter of Nazareth. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. Bev, roll call, please, Bev. Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Councilmember Dickey.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Yates.
Present.
Vice Chair Hanson.
Here.
Board Member Elke.
Here.
And Board Member Legay.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Any speaker cards on this? No. Okay. Consideration of approving the Cottonwood Maintenance District Board meeting minutes of June 20, 2013. There is no staff report. Can I get a motion to approve the six twenty thirteen minutes?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any speaker cards? No. Okay, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For items two and three, there is one staff report. Open the public hearing. Public hearing regarding resolution CMD 2014-01, approving the tentative budget of the district for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2014, and ending June 30, 2015, and setting a hearing date for the budget and annual assessments. Ken.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council. The Cottonwoods Maintenance District was formed by the town council in 1999 for the purposes of improving common areas of the Cottonwoods subdivision. The town council serves as the governing board of the district, and the maintenance district provides for the maintenance of the common area which performed by the town of Fountain Hills. The annual cost is repaid through an annual property tax assessment of $83.15, which is the same as last year, per property levied to the town and collected by Maricopa County. The estimated levy includes the annual contract costs for landscaping, as well as established reserved amount for future exterior wall maintenance.
Okay, thank you, Ken. Board members, any comments or questions? No? Any speaker cards? No? Okay. Then I will close the public hearing. Consideration of resolution CMD 2014-01 as just presented. Any further board discussion? No? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now I will open the special session of the Cottonwood Maintenance District Board. Roll call, please, Bev. Chairman Kavanaugh.
Here.
Board Member Dickey.
Here.
Board Member Brown.
Here.
Board Member Yates.
Present.
Vice Chair Hanson.
Here.
Board Member Elke.
Here.
And Board Member Legay.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Any speaker cards on this? No. Okay. Consideration of approving the Cottonwood Maintenance District Board meeting minutes of June 20, 2013. There is no staff report. Can I get a motion to approve the six twenty thirteen minutes?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any speaker cards? No. Okay, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For items two and three, there is one staff report. Open the public hearing. Public hearing regarding resolution CMD 2014-01, approving the tentative budget of the district for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2014, and ending June 30, 2015, and setting a hearing date for the budget and annual assessments. Ken.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council. The Cottonwoods Maintenance District was formed by the town council in 1999 for the purposes of improving common areas of the Cottonwoods subdivision. The town council serves as the governing board of the district, and the maintenance district provides for the maintenance of the common area which performed by the town of Fountain Hills. The annual cost is repaid through an annual property tax assessment of $83.15, which is the same as last year, per property levied to the town and collected by Maricopa County. The estimated levy includes the annual contract costs for landscaping, as well as established reserved amount for future exterior wall maintenance.
Okay, thank you, Ken. Board members, any comments or questions? No? Any speaker cards? No? Okay. Then I will close the public hearing. Consideration of resolution CMD 2014-01 as just presented. Any further board discussion? If not, can I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. There we are. Now we are up to our regular session. Hold the regular session to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. And Parish Associate Reverend Stan Jones from Fountain Hills Presbyterian Church, thank you for joining us tonight.
You're welcome. I invite you to join me in prayer. Great God, our source of life and our source of light, we give thanks to you for these servants of our town who have dedicated themselves to calling forth the best possible future for all of us. Many of us here pray very often, "Thy will be done on earth." May the deliberations tonight be a piece of that, your spirit prevailing, genuine listening to opinions different than ours, a rare sense of kinship with one another, the capacity to recognize a better idea than the one we walked in with, an ego subordinate to the greater good. God, for your sake and for our sake, enable this meeting to be an expression of the higher reaches of our humanity. I ask in the name of the great cloud of witnesses who have gone before us and given a lift to humanity, and especially to that carpenter of Nazareth. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. Bev, roll call, please, Bev. Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Councilmember Dickey.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Yates.
Present.
Vice Chair Hanson.
Here.
Board Member Elke.
Here.
And Board Member Legay.
Here.
Okay. I'm going to reverse the order on the next items, and I'm going to do my report second. I'm going to do first the recognition of State Representative John Kavanaugh for being awarded the Arizona League of Cities and Towns Champion Award. John's got to get to Scottsdale Community College to proctor a test, so we're going to let him go first. Renee from the league is here.
Mayor and council members, good evening. For the record, my name is Renee Guillen. I'm the legislative director for the League of Arizona Cities and Towns. And for those that may not know, every year, the League of Arizona Cities and Towns recognizes legislators that are sympathetic or represent their cities and towns and vote in ways that help ensure the cities and towns can remain vibrant and successful in Arizona. And last year, we instituted a system where we felt that, or I should say, I felt that it was unfortunate that our conference typically is in the Phoenix area or in the Tucson area, which for smaller and rural communities sometimes means that those cities and towns can't be there when the representatives that represent their district are acknowledged. So this is kind of a new program that we've started. And so with that being said, last year, you may remember, in 2013, tax reform, TPT reform, was a critical issue for cities and towns, and was frankly probably one of the tent pole issues that we faced in recent memory. And communities like Fountain Hills in particular were at risk for losing significant revenue streams with some of the proposed changes. But I'd like to think that thankfully, we were able to enact reforms that were meaningful but also preserve those revenue streams that cities and towns rely on. And Representative Kavanaugh was a paramount aspect of our efforts on that bill. He and I spent probably countless hours in the basement and just discussing strategy, outreach to legislators, education to legislators, and for that, and given the importance of the issue, and just our ability to have Representative Kavanaugh as a legislator that we can turn to, that has an open door with us, I am very pleased to present Representative John Kavanaugh with our 2013 Champion of the League of Arizona Cities and Towns Award.
Yay!
All right. Well, I'd like to thank the league very much for this award. I really do appreciate it. I spent three years on a town council back east, and I spent six years on this town council. So I'm certainly cognizant of the issues and the concerns of town councils. And at least on the biggies, I try to be there for you guys. Certainly, it worked out well this last session. So I thank you very much, and my students who are dying to take their final exam, thank you for pushing this up to a little bit closer. Thank you all very much.
All right. Great. Of course, we all thank the league for constantly keeping us up to date on all the bills, for all the Monday phone calls. You really did a fabulous job, and I look forward to the league conference this summer. All right. So I will combine both of my reports for the sake of a little bit of spare time here. This is where I usually give an update on activities that I do and economic development. There were no big issues at the MAGG meeting. The meeting updated us on some new features to the interactive maps that our town has already started to use. These online maps will save time gathering data about Fountain Hills and the surrounding area that can be used by our economic development director, Scott Cooper. There are also improvements to the business-to-business interactive maps that our business community can take advantage of. There was an update by Amy St. Peter, who directs the senior transportation issues. At my request, Amy came out to Fountain Hills and met with Ken Buchanan and the staff to offer her expertise in this area. She has pledged to work with us as we try to find more transportation options for our seniors and disabled residents. We need to take advantage of any services offered by organizations such as MAG. Our tax dollars pay for the studies and their staff, and they've offered the help at any time to assist us. MCSO held its quarterly meeting. The news was good as far as crime being low here in town, as opposed to many other areas in the valley. The captain also detailed the new federal guidelines that his deputies must follow. Residents are still concerned about the speeding on our roads and brought that issue up once again with the captain. Coincidentally, the Noon Rotary had its guest county attorney, Bill Montgomery, who brought the group up to date on the operation of his office, new programs he's initiated, and his office's success in reducing crime. It was a great compliment to the MCSO report. Our new bronze sculpture, Fred and Ginger, donated by town residents Walter and Vanny Martin. Coincidentally, they are the parents of Brian Martin, who heads the Noon Rotary. You can see what a small town we have. Was dedicated and turned over to the town. But I wanted to mention something unique that the Martins did to their dedication. Rather than just a plaque with their names, they wrote a short story of their lives together. And I have a feeling that this will start other donors thinking about their plaques. The L. Allen Crookshank River F-Time Museum had an opening of its new ranching exhibit. Our own town resident, famous Western artist and historian Carlos Haddaway, who you may know as the Arizona Kid, dazzled the crowd with his stories about the old Peabody Ranch that was located right here before Fountain Hills existed, and the ranching history of the surrounding areas. If you haven't been to our museum lately, the new exhibit and some other awesome changes are worth a trip. Don't forget to bring those kids and the grandkids. And that concludes my report for today. Do we have any speaker cards on call to the public? Yes, Mayor, we have one. Linda Bordeaux. Hi. Good evening, council members. I'm Linda Bordeaux from Fountain Hills. I just wanted to address something that was going around on Facebook. In the Fountain Hills connection, there was a lot of people who saw the trees go down on the fountain and were shocked, like they had not heard this before. So I just want to encourage people, and some of them were saying, "Well, it was up to the town council. You're not doing a good job informing the public." So I took some time on Facebook to explain that you are by law, in fact, supposed to talk about these hearings. You're supposed to post them in the paper here at town. And I encourage the folks and residents who have an interest in what's going on in the town to log onto the website. It's FH.AZ.gov, and to go ahead and pull up the meeting minutes and look at what's going on in the town. It's really up to us to go ahead and see what's being discussed, and then to read the packet and see all the information pertinent, and then voice your opinion at a hearing late tonight. We have a full house tonight. There's a lot of people interested in the Adaro Canyon. I've been to many public hearings here at the council, and there's usually not a lot of people who show up. So I'd like to encourage folks to voice your opinion before the items have been decided upon, and not to get too upset after, you know, with the council. I mean, you had a chance in the beginning to go ahead and do it. Again, it can be a little scary to get up here sometimes, but after you've done it once or twice, it's really not as hard as it looks. And you may also just submit a speaker card without actually having to say anything. I think sometimes our town council takes a long time considering items, and I think it's for just this reason. We've passed many things that people have been, you know, uproar about after the fact, and the time to do it is during the hearings. So that's really all I just wanted to say. I don't begrudge anybody how they felt about the trees coming down. I mean, I didn't like seeing them come down either, but it was passed, and that was what we decided to do. So that's really all I wanted to say, to encourage folks to participate, come down, talk about a subject. I know you guys love it when we come down, don't you? Thank you, everyone. Okay. Thank you, Linda. All right. Anything, anyone else? No, Mayor. We'll go on to our consent agenda items, one, two, three, as listed. Can I get a motion to approve?
Mayor, so moved.
And a second?
Second.
And I need a roll call vote for that, please? Councilmember Dickey.
Aye.
Councilmember Elke.
Aye.
Councilmember Legay.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Yates.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Mayor seven zero. Thank you. We'll go on to our regular agenda items, number four, discussion with possible direction to staff regarding the potential to combine the community services departments advisory commission.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, as you know, in discussion at our strategic planning retreat that we had back in January, you asked staff to go out and see, we had a request that we, for consideration, to look at some consolidation of some of our advisory boards. Mark, or the community services director, was charged with reviewing that with a lot of the commissioners and the chairmen of the commissions to address that, and he has a report for you tonight.
Thank you, Ken. Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council. As Ken mentioned, the first time we brought this topic forward recently was at the retreat back in January. After some discussion, the direction that staff was given was to work with the various commissions that were responsible for, the community center advisory commission, senior services advisory commission, the park and rec commission, and, who am I missing, the McDowell Mountain Preservation Commission, to see if there was feelings that mirrored those of the town staff as far as the possibility for consolidation. So we did meet several times with the commission chairs and reached the consensus that they were supportive of the recommendations of staff, with one caveat being that the McDowell Mountain Preservation Commission had requested that while they were willing to consolidate, they wanted it to be delayed until such time as the trailhead in Adaro Canyon was built or December 31, 2017, whichever came first. After that latest discussion, we approached each of the commissions individually and brought this potential topic to them. I'm pleased to tell you that each of them voted unanimously to support the recommendations of staff as I presented them. So we're here tonight to ask basically for two things. First of all, direction from you on the possibility of taking this information back, working with the town attorney to come back with a resolution that would consolidate the commissions along the lines that I mentioned. And secondly, that we would develop bylaws and bring those back to you as well at your June 5 meeting for consideration. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions, or I think most of the commissioners, if not all of them, are here tonight. It's a little bit of a full house, so I wasn't able to do a complete head count, but they are here, and I think at least one of them wishes to speak.
Were you going to go through the slideshow or not?
I was going to, Mayor, but the interest of time, I can certainly do that if you would like me to.
I guess we can go through quickly because there might be some questions on the slides.
Okay. Certainly.
Thank you.
Overall, it's the organizational chow of the town. We, as I mentioned, have four commissions listed there on the left. We are proposing basically that that be shrunk down to two commissions and be renamed the Community Services Commission, and then the existing MMPC would be the Conservation Commission. Their responsibilities, we changed a little bit, which I'll touch on in a minute. Part of the reason for doing this was the staff resources. As you know, the staff has been cut back across the town, including in my department. It is difficult to manage four commissions and 28 different commissioners with multiple meetings, sometimes in the same week, as well as joint meetings with council on a regular basis annually. So it's an attempt on our part to not only reduce the staffing and resources, but also be able to better consolidate our time and then also the time with the commissions. We think their advisory role can be expanded with the community center advisory commission having a much broader range of responsibilities instead of each commission being in a relatively
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, as you know, in discussion at our strategic planning retreat that we had back in January, you asked staff to go out and see, we had a request that we, for consideration, to look at some consolidation of some of our advisory boards. Mark, or the community services director, was charged with reviewing that with a lot of the commissioners and the chairmen of the commissions to address that, and he has a report for you tonight.
Thank you, Ken. Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council. As Ken mentioned, the first time we brought this topic forward recently was at the retreat back in January. After some discussion, the direction that staff was given was to work with the various commissions that were responsible for, the Community Center Advisory Commission, Senior Services Advisory Commission, the Park and Rec Commission, and, who am I missing, the McDowell Mountain Preservation Commission, to see if there was feelings that mirrored those of the town staff as far as the possibility for consolidation. So we did meet several times with the commission chairs and reached the consensus that they were supportive of the recommendations of staff, with one caveat being that the McDowell Mountain Preservation Commission had requested that while they were willing to consolidate, they wanted it to be delayed until such time as the trailhead in Adaro Canyon was built or December 31st, 2017, whichever came first. After that latest discussion, we approached each of the commissions individually and brought this potential topic to them. I'm pleased to tell you that each of them voted unanimously to support the recommendations of staff as I presented them. So we're here tonight to ask basically for two things. First of all, direction from you on the possibility of taking this information back, working with the town attorney to come back with a resolution that would consolidate the commissions along the lines that I mentioned, and secondly, that we would develop bylaws and bring those back to you as well at your June 5th meeting for consideration. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions, or I think most of the commissioners, if not all of them, are here tonight. It's a little bit of a full house, so I wasn't able to do a complete head count, but they are here, and I think at least one of them wishes to speak.
Were you going to go through the slideshow or not?
I was going to, Mayor, but the interest of time, I can certainly do that if you would like me to.
I guess we can, we can go through quickly because there might be some questions on the slides.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Overall, it's the organizational chow of the town. We, as I mentioned, have four commissions listed there on the left. We are proposing basically that that be shrunk down to two commissions and be renamed the Community Services Commission, and then the existing MMPC would be the Conservation Commission. Their responsibilities, we changed a little bit, which I'll touch on in a minute. Part of the, the reason for doing this was the staff resources. As you know, the staff has been cut back across the town, including in my department. It is difficult to manage four commissions and 28 different commissioners with multiple meetings, sometimes in the same week, as well as joint meetings with council on a regular basis annually. So it's an attempt on our part to not only reduce the staffing and resources, but also be able to better consolidate our time and then also the time with the commissions. We think their advisory role can be expanded with the Community Center Advisory Commission having much broader range of responsibilities instead of each commission being in a relatively narrow silo. And you can see on the right, the Conservation Commission would be not only responsible for the preserve, but also the Fountain Overlook Trail and the Desert Botanical Garden. Here's a list of just recent agenda items on your left, and then on the right-hand side, some potential agenda items. We think that this commission will be able to look at those in a much broader perspective, everything from fee policies to operations and acceptance and placement of various art, et cetera. As I mentioned, the process we used is listed here. We met with each of the commissions, first individually with the commission chairs. We asked to determine the number of commissioners that were initially interested, could reach up to 18 members, and it would be reduced each year through term limits of two, of one, two, or three-year terms. At the end of two years, the commissions would be composed of nine members, including one youth member that we currently have an opening for on the Parks and Rec Commission. Consolidation timeline, we met with the Park and Rec Commission on March the 10th, we met with the Community Center Advisory Commission on March the 17th, the Senior Service Advisory Commission on March the 24th, and the McDowell Mountain Preservation Commission meeting on, on March the 23rd. We also met subsequently with that, with the commission chairs again, so that they were aware of the decision that had been made by the respective other commissions, and finally, May 1st is find us, finds us here. So we're following the timeline that we laid out originally to go through this process. Here's a timeframe of what we would do as far as implementation. Again, this has been covered with the commissions and also with the chairs, but I wanted to cover it with you as well. Consolidation would begin as early as June 2014, subject to approval of the resolution and the bylaws at your June 15th meeting. A planning retreat for either in July or August, maybe even early September, but then monthly meetings beginning with an expanded commission would begin in September. Conservation Commission could recruit immediately to fill some current openings. It would have an expanded role, but as I mentioned earlier, there would be a sunset clause ending on December 31st, or when the trailhead was built, whichever came first. And then consolidate into the Community Services Commission beginning on January 1st, 2018. Results of consolidation, just to reemphasize this, less administrative support for staff, freeing up time to perform more essential functions, increase efficiencies, increase responsibility for the new commissioners, which would help in retention and recruitment, which has been a problem. Continue to provide the feedback and recommendations to the town council necessary to help make decisions in a much broader spectrum. And then finally, the mission statement of department with that. I would answer any questions that you might have.
Any, any questions for the council for Mark? No? Nope. The only comment that I have is that I was really in favor of this, also because of the staff time, but I had heard from many of the commissioners that in the smaller commissions, they didn't have a lot to do.
Correct.
And they just wanted to do more. It's kind of hard to ask someone to sit on a commission and then they meet once, and then they don't meet again for another four months or so because they don't have an agenda. So I think this is going to generate a lot more interest. Okay, then. You think?
Sure.
Councilman Legay?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion, but prior to that, Mark, I know this is something you've been looking at for years, and you put together a tremendous process, and I really appreciate the fact that you use such a high involvement process for, for making this happen. I know at the front-end commissioners had some anxiety about doing it, and it appears now there's buy-in. I've spoken to a number of them, and there's, there's buy-in on that. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to work with town attorney to prepare a resolution for council consideration at our June 5th meeting to prepare bylaws for the new Community Services Advisory Commission. Thank you.
All right. Do we have any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
No. Any further?
Didn't one commissioner want to speak?
I wasn't sure if they wanted to speak on this topic. It would appear they want to speak on another topic.
Okay. Any further council discussion or questions? Okay, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor's seven zero.
All right. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
And number five, discussion with possible direction to staff regarding Phase Six of the improvements to Fountain Park specific to bollards along the sidewalk and signage.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, again, the community services director has, if you remember, we reviewed the final phase projects of, of Phase Six of the Fountain Park, and he has a couple of areas that, after discussion that the council had with it, to bring back, to look at, namely the lighting of the path and the type of bollards to be used, as well as the signage to be discussed as well.
Okay, Bev, how do I get it back to the main screen? It says click to exit. Okay, got it. Thank you. If you remember, at our discussion back at our previous meeting, when the contract for the park's next phase and final phase, Phase Six, there were two items that led to some discussion. We were asked as a staff to come back and bring some of that information forward to you, so I'm here tonight to do that. The first one is, there was some discussion on, was the size and type of bollards that we would use along the sidewalk. What you have in front of you here is a cut sheet that was provided by the project architect. The one on the right there that is in a square box, that is the bollard that he's proposing. It is a relatively small 42-inch-high bollard, but most importantly, it is of aluminum construction, which is basically impervious to saltwater. It's designed for salt environments, beach settings, coastal areas. He's also looking at one other type that might be substituted for this one, and it's actually a stainless steel model for the same reasons, the salt content, so. Secondly, there was some discussion about the signage, and specifically, these are, what you see in front of you are memorial signage. There are three of those proposed. One would be at the corner of Palisades and Suoro. The second one would be entering the parking lot on the south side of the park off of El Lago, and the third one would be on the corner of Palisades and El Lago, would designate that this is in fact Fountain Park. Obviously, most people that live here recognize it as Fountain Park, but if you're coming from out of town, you wouldn't necessarily know that unless the fountain was on. The other thing that we tried to do was come up with a scenario whereby we could blend, to the extent that we could, a potential sign into the monument signs that were already being proposed. We also asked the architect to take a look at what they could do to soften the outline of the signage, and what you see there is some of the renderings of what that potentially might look like, not only ground cover in front, but to the sides and in back of canopy of trees that would help break that up. This is proposed to be added on top of the sign at the corner of Suoro and Palisades. It is about four feet to the bottom of the base, and it's another, I believe, nine and a half feet, or 12 feet to the top of the sign. The letters would be sized based on the standards for people being able to observe it from that corner, whether they're driving or sitting in a car at a light would be able to see that sign. I would also like to add that because of the number of special events that we had this spring, it was a real good opportunity to get some feedback from some people, and I was amazed at the number of people that walked by and were asking questions about activities in the park because they weren't aware of them. They would either see us setting up for, whether it was the car show, whether it was the movie, or whether it was for the concerts in the park, and they would come up and ask what was going on. And I said, "Well, do you, did you not get the paper? Did you not get the insert?" And, "Oh, yeah, I remembered it, but I didn't read it." And I think the addition of a signage like this, it would be able to not only display park events, but town events that were downtown, would go a long ways towards educating principally the residents of what activities are taking place in the town. I think it would be a nice asset. It would operate the same as the restrictions that are on other signs of this nature. In other words, we would follow the same rules, including that the sign would shut down. I believe that the requirement now is 10 o'clock. So with that, I would be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Just, just the location, is this catty corner, or is this straight on Suoro?
It would be, it's actually a curved sign, and it would be kind of a 45-degree at the, what would be the southeast corner of that intersection on Suoro and Palisades.
Okay. Questions? Councilman Yates.
Thanks, Mark. Great presentation. Just for a matter of clarification, when you say turn off at 10 o'clock, you mean go static? There'll be a
Correct.
A shingle on there, whether it be just Fountain Park or whatever the next event coming up?
I think we actually have the capability of making it go completely black. So if that would be the preference of the council, we could do that as well.
That would not be the preference.
Okay.
That would not be my preference. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Hanson.
Mark, my only concern was, I took out a tape measure today and was scrolling it up the wall, and, yeah, getting up to the 11, 12 feet, and it seemed like that would really be kind of sticking out like a sore thumb. I mean, it just seemed awfully high. Was there a reason? I mean, were you concerned about visibility?
Mayor Kavanaugh, Councilmember Hanson. That was part of the concern. They also, like I said, they wanted to put some information or some vegetation around the back that would, that would block that a little bit. Because it's a little bit of a distance into the park, they wanted to raise it up a little bit, so regardless of what corner you were coming from or the distance you were traveling from, it would be fairly easily visible. So that was their major consideration when getting it high enough so that people could in fact see it if they were still a ways away.
So maybe it would be a little bit lower than sidewalk level, so?
I don't think it would be lower than sidewalk level. The intent was to have it raised four feet from grade for the bottom of the Fountain Park signage itself, and then it's, I think it says 11 feet from basically the ground level up to the top of the sign, not 12.
So, so are they figuring someone reading it going so many miles an hour, is that how they were figuring how big they would need the letters?
Actually, it was not only speed, but more importantly, the distance involved for people to be able to see. And there are standards that are out there, and they would follow those standards.
Right. Okay. Any other questions? Yes, Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I like everything you're presenting, but it, it looks like a big giant TV. I think the sign itself could, the, the, the monitor itself could have a little more design put into it where it didn't look just like a TV mounted on top of our sign.
Okay.
I also think we could possibly do a little mock-up and, and show the council what 11 feet actually looks at, looks like in a large open space, because in a large open space, I don't feel that it will be as high as it would be against the building trying to shuffle a tape up to 11 feet. But a small mock-up might put the council's mind at ease.
Okay.
Okay. Do that? Councilman Legay?
Thank you, Mayor. Mark, I'm looking at this in kind of two, two sections here. You have the Fountain Park. I'm just going to refer to that as the monument sign, and then on top of that, we have this, this LED sign. Do you know, well, I hope you know, the cost of the monument sign is, and the separate cost of the LED sign?
I know the LED sign is budgeted at $60,000, and I believe the sign with Fountain Park is $30,000.
$30,000. And there, the Fountain Park monument sign, we're looking at three of those, and then just the one LED sign?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. I guess the cost of $66,000 concerns me in terms of other needs that I see at Fountain Park. I'm also not a proponent of LED signs in our downtown area. I mean, in terms of being consistent, I think they add an ambiance that's not characteristic of, of our park and our natural environment. We do know that the one we do have is constantly creating havoc and feedback from, from our residents. I frankly feel that that $66,000 could be spent in a better way. I think these monument signs are, are extremely attractive.
Councilman Elke.
Thank you. I too would like to see a little bit more first. I'm not a proponent or in favor really of a huge LED sign of that sort, because it would, I think, take away some of the, again, the ambiance of the park down there. And I remember we had discussed before having something over by the Veterans Memorial, having something that people walk by, because I know they have some postings there as far as events and different things that are coming up. This just seems like it would be something that would just stand out in, in the night sky, and that's one of the things that we obviously really enjoy. I'd like to see, I reserve judgment, but I'd like to see more before we move forward on this.
Okay. Any other council discussion? All right. Anybody like to make a motion on this, or?
I'd make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to table this for further discussion.
Mayor?
Can we make the motion just for the bollards? Are you okay with doing that, for just going ahead with the bollard lighting?
Sure.
You know what I mean? Okay. So, I'm sorry. Motion to approve the style of bollard, um, sorry.
As presented.
As, yeah, it doesn't, yeah, as recommended, sorry. Motion to approve the style, the style of bollard lighting as recommended.
Second?
Okay. Any discussion on the bollards? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor's seven zero.
Okay. Did you want to make a motion on?
I don't, I don't think I need to make a motion at this point, because we passed as far as the bollards. I think staff has some direction at this point.
Is that good enough for everybody? Any objection to that? Nope? Okay. And we didn't have any speaker cards on this item?
No, Mayor.
All right, then we'll just go on. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. One thing I would like to mention, ultimately, if the, the council is still concerned about this, one of the suggestions that was made is potentially we could stub in the lines for a screen in the future, and if the council changed their mind down the road, we'd at least be in a position where we wouldn't have to trench and do those kinds of things. So something to consider when I bring something back. Okay?
Good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, now I will go to Vice Mayor Hanson.
Mayor, due to a conflict of interest, I will recuse myself for items six through 12.
All right. Thank you. We'll miss you.
[inaudible]
All right, we will have one staff report for items six to 12, but reminding council, we need separate motions required on each action item, seven, eight, 10, 11, and 12. And now we will go to Bob.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This presentation covers the five applications that are before you tonight regarding Adaro Canyon. It includes the minor general plan amendment, the amended settlement agreement, the planned area development, or PAD, the preliminary master plat, and the parcel one preliminary Adaro Canyon is a 431-acre site located west of Palisades Boulevard, south of the McDowell Mountain Preserve, and north of the town border with Scottsdale. The general plan, the land use map currently denotes this area as single-family, very-low-density residential. Due to the smaller lots, the townhouses, and the condo hotel units, the density increases within the PAD to allow 10 units per acre in some areas. In order for zoning to allow the residential density increase, it must be consistent with the general plan. As such, a general plan amendment is necessary. Since the area of density increase is within the PAD, and the PAD area is less than 80 acres, the general plan amendment follows the minor amendment process. The proposal is to change the general plan land use designation within the PAD to multifamily high density in order to allow for the increased density. Settlement agreement. The developer and the town previously entered into a settlement agreement relating to the development potential of Adaro Canyon property. Resolution 2014-08 will amend that settlement agreement. This amended agreement outlines a number of responsibilities and conditions for both the developer and the town during the development process. It has a lot of moving parts dealing with many issues, such as traffic, increasing the hillside disturbance allowance, cut-and-fill waivers, grading, curbs and sidewalks, on-street parking, specialty signage, the Hidden Hills Bike Trail easement, the PAD's changes in density zoning and land use designations, deed restriction release for the community theater, the fire station land swap, trailhead access, SRP aesthetics funding for the powerline relocation, and project phasing. The preliminary master plat proposes to create 10 residential parcels and one parcel for administrative uses. Parcels 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 9, shown in light gray on the screen, will maintain their current zoning district designations. Parcel 1 is currently zoned R16 and R18. The other parcels are currently zoned R143. Parcel 7, 8, 10, and 10C will be within the new Adaro Canyon PAD zoning district. Those are shown in the darker gray on the screen. The preliminary master plat will have 118 custom hillside lots with one acre or more, each on roughly 318 acres. 61 semi-custom lots with a minimum 10,000 square feet on roughly 30 acres. There will be 44 townhouses on roughly 25 acres and 120 condominium slash hotel units on roughly 12 acres. And there is also an administration and office, sales office on roughly half an acre. Total project proposed density is .8 dwelling units per acre. The preliminary master plat is designed generally, as designed, generally meets the requirements of the town subdivision regulations. There is one notable exception. There's currently a bike trail ending at the Hidden Hills Development in Scottsdale just south of parcel one. The preliminary master plat will extend the bike trail up to connect to Eagle Ridge Drive and ultimately up to the trailhead. The off-road portion of the bike trail will be constructed according to Scottsdale's design standards, since they are responsible for that easement right now. The PAD is 79.9 acres, and it proposed to be rezoned as Adaro Canyon PAD. This slide shows the area to be rezoned outlined in red. As already noted, the PAD includes parcels 7, 8, 10, and 10C. Parcel 7 includes the 31 semi-custom 10,000-plus-square-foot lots, and will have the SC designation within the PAD. This is a single-family home area. Parcel 8 includes the 44 townhouses and will have the TH designation. This area will allow multi-unit buildings, but the norm is contemplated to be two- or three-unit buildings. Parcel 10 includes the 120 condominium slash hotel units and will have the MF designation. It should be noted that the condominiums could potentially be permitted under this new designation to be included in the Copperwind Resort rental pool at some future date should the two parties reach an agreement. Or should that arrangement fall through, the applicants could be allowed by special use permit to create a standalone hotel on this property. This area will allow for multi-unit buildings with a maximum height of 40 feet. Parcel 10C includes the sales and HOA office building and will have the SA designation. That's located actually between the two, the two roads, in and out, the one road, but it's the, an island median. The red circle in the middle is the water tank. That is not part of the PAD. The complete Balkan coverage control tables for these PAD designations is also in your Parcel one preliminary plat, this slide shows the location of parcel one in relation to the rest of Adaro Canyon. It's on the south side of Eagle Ridge Drive, abutting Scottsdale on the south, the Hidden Hills Development, and on the west, the Scottsdale Mountain Estates Development. I spliced all the preliminary plat pages together for parcel one for this slide so you can have a better overview. Parcel one will remain under the R16 and R18 zoning designations, and will be developed as 30 semi-custom, single-family homes on approximately 44.8 acres, with lot sizes ranging between 15,000 and 18,399 square feet. Three open-space tracks create a buffer to surrounding areas and have a combined area of 24.72 acres. The proposed private gated roadway will be a 2,106-foot-long cul-de-sac beginning at Eagle Ridge Drive and going in a general southeasterly direction. The road, grading, cut-fill, sidewalks, and curbs will all be constructed to the hillside local road standards as modified in the Adaro Canyon settlement agreement. There is a 236-foot-long emergency vehicle access drive between the end of the new cul-de-sac and the Hidden Hills subdivision in Scottsdale. This access will be gated and used during emergencies only. A 2,047-foot-long bike trail extension will be included from the Hidden Hills end, which connects to Eagle Ridge Drive, the Hidden Hills, the bike trail connects to Eagle Ridge Drive, and this portion of the trail will be constructed according to Scottsdale standards, as I already, as I already noted, because they own the easement. And there's also a 97-foot-long access, which will be provided to the Scottsdale Mountain Estates, previously approved but inaccessible subdivision in Scottsdale. Scottsdale Mountain Estates is approved for 13 single-family lots, and it's expected that this community will also be gated. This is a preliminary plat and just establishes the basic layout of the subdivision. No building lots are being created yet. All the proposed lots conform to present zoning requirements, and the roadway will be constructed to the modified mountain hillside local standards. The phasing plan is also being approved within the amended settlement agreement and consists of two phases. Phase one has four components. The destruction of Eagle Ridge Drive from the beginning point at the existing gate at Copperwind up to the parcel two intersection. That's shown as the yellow solid line. Part two, the grading Eagle Ridge Drive as a dirt road from the parcel two intersection up to the trailhead, so the town can have access and construct the trailhead facilities. That's shown as the dark green solid line. Developer will also provide the trailhead with temporary water, power, and sanitary services. Part three of that is the construction of the bike trail connection from Hidden Hills to Eagle Ridge Drive. That's kind of the curly line shown at the bottom in, in the light blue. And the fourth part, part of phase one, is the development of parcels 1, 7, 8, 10, and 10C, and those are shown in the 10C, and those are shown in the blue and the pink areas. Phase two has two components. Final construction, paving of Eagle Ridge Drive from the parcel two intersection, the rest of the way up to the trailhead. Again, that's the green solid line. And development of the rest of the project, parcels 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 9, which are the custom hillside lots, and those are shown in the light gray. At this time, phase two has not yet been given an estimated start date. The Planning and Zoning Commission was unable to come to conclusions or forward a recommendation regarding the proposals due to a deadlock of three-to-three tie votes. The minutes and the planning, of the planning and zoning hearings have been included in your packets for your reference. Due to that, the default recommendation by ordinance to deny the applications has been entered into the record. Staff recommends approval of the five Adaro Canyon proposals as presented and subject to the stipulations outlined in your staff reports. That concludes the staff presentation, and I am, I do understand that the applicants also wish to make a presentation.
All right. Thank you, Bob. The applicants like to make a presentation. Now's your time.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor and Town Council. I'm Jeremy Hall. I'm president of MCO Properties and Adaro Canyon LLC is the applicant for this project. Based on the many familiar faces I see behind me, I think there's going to be a lot of public comments, so I will try to be brief. I'll introduce our team, and I've asked them to be brief, and as I know, all of you have been, kept apprised of, of our progress with staff as we've, as we've worked on this for the better part of the last year. First of all, I would like to thank staff. They've worked very hard, all of them have, and I'm going to try to recognize all of them. Mark Mayer, Paul Mood, Randy Harrell, Randy Roberts, David Ott, of course, the, the town manager, Ken Buchanan, and the town attorney has worked very hard with us. And in particular, I really appreciate the fact that the staff has entertained with an open mind some new concepts, some new ideas, and some, some very progressive things that we proposed in this project. They didn't agree with all of them, but they were open to, to consideration, and some of them made it into the project, and some of them haven't, and that's fine. But it's the end of, the, the end of the day, it's a, we're all very satisfied with it, the staff and our side, and, you know, all our work is, I'm proud to present it today. Briefly, we're here to change the plan for Adaro Canyon, which was devised 15 years ago, almost a generation ago now. It doesn't seem like it's been that long, but it has. Back in that, in, in the day, Adaro Canyon and Eagles Nest were entitled together for all very high-end custom home sites at a time where there was a market for very high-end custom home sites. As, as we all know, we've lived through a very tough recession, and the market for those custom home sites is still, is, is improved, but it's still at an ebb. I have been in front of this, this body a number of times on, on various issues where Adaro Canyon has come up, and we have all wanted this development to commence years before now, and for various reasons, mostly economic, we have not been able to do so. And one of the things that has been standing in the way is the very nature that the product in Adaro Canyon is exactly the same as the product in Eagles Nest. So therefore, one project had to complete before the, the next project started. We are sitting today with about 100-plus lots in Eagles Nest, is about 40% of the project still unsold and, and partially yet to be developed. So a year ago, we started looking at this as maybe, maybe we should start to rethink this. The market has definitely changed in 15 years. Even the market for the very affluent custom homes has changed. We don't see the 10,000, the 8,000-square-foot homes coming through design review like we did five, seven, eight years ago. It's now, the market is for still a high-quality home, but a much smaller home. The, the positive press that you, that we've all seen over the last year, 18 months, about the housing market recovery is primarily not in the high-end market, it's in the lower-end market. And as a, that, that really was the impetus for us to start to rethink this. How can we get this project going sooner, resolve the issues that we've had for a long time with access through the, through, through the property to the preserve, and try to get something going that doesn't necessarily have to follow Eagles Nest? The result is where we are today. We've right-sized the development. We have, it is now at a, at a density and a product mix that is very similar to what is, has been approved and, and built in Fountain Hills over the last 20 years. And I'll direct you just to this chart here, to my left, to your right, where the average density of Adaro Canyon now is at .8 units to the acre. As Bob Rogers mentioned, it is very much in line with the average of all the other communities, major residential communities, that average at .86. And I'll direct you in particular to Sunridge Canyon, which is adjacent to this project, which is at .87, and Fire Rock Country Club, which was our last major development, which is at .75, also with a, a variety of mix of, of product use and density. So this is very much in keeping with that. We are also sensitive to the neighbors, and I have met with representatives of, of all the major residential HOAs around Adaro Canyon. Adaro is surrounded by, obviously, you know, the Copperwind Resort exists, there is a hotel there now, there is multifamily, there's high-density multifamily, there is, there's higher-density production housing, there's golf community, obviously, Sunridge Canyon and custom homes. All of those elements are in this project. So it's very much in keeping with what's, what's in the, in the surrounding area, very much in keeping with what Fountain Hills has evolved to be and is, and is all about. And, and the good news is, is that we've got a, a project that's viable today, and we can start it today, and we can, we can solve a lot of problems that we've, that have plagued both of us through the years with trying to get this project going. With that, I'll just introduce the team, and then I'm going to sit down and let, and let, let the presentation continue. I have with me today Jeff Denzack. You may recognize him. He was here and with us and the chamber doing the downtown plan for, for years. He's with Swaback Partners, renowned land development firm. They've worked with us for a number of years, and he is the, he's the gentleman with the largest color printer in the town. So if you need to render your sign, by the way, he could probably put it on his printer. Paul Gilbert is our land use attorney with Use Gilbert. I know you're familiar with, with Paul. And also with me today, I have Jeff Nielsen. Jeff, would you raise your hand? Jeff is with Toll Brothers. Toll Brothers has committed to taking down a substantial number of, of residential lots, all of the semi-custom lots, actually, at the beginning of this project. And so he's here, be happy to answer questions if anybody has them. And also with me, I have Neil Ginsberg. Neil is here. And Neil is with the ownership of Copperwind, and he's here to answer questions for, for anyone, if anybody has any. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff and take it away. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Again, my name is Jeff Denzack from Swaback Partners. Madam Mayor, council members, thank you for your attention this evening. I am going to ask Bevlin for a handheld mic, because I'm going to try to walk around a little bit to showcase some of the information that we have brought with us. But, but the first thing I'd like to do that might help in terms of your discussion of signage, if you look at our boards over here, my guess is the top of our board might be at about your 11-foot height that you guys were discussing before. So if you want to borrow any of our black boards later to get a feel for the size of your sign, by all means, you all can do that. Jeremy mentioned our company, Swaback Partners, and, and I'm a partner with the firm. I've been with the firm for over 10 years, and the firm has been in existence for over 35 years, and we are so fortunate and blessed to be able to work on a wide variety of projects all over the valley, all over Arizona, the southwest, across the United States, and abroad. And our background is diverse, the basis of which is community planning. And as you know, we've been involved with Fountain Hills on and off for many, many years. Part of that community planning relates to the design of homes, multifamily housing, significant experience with resorts and hospitality, but a real focus on community building, okay? And if Vern Swaback was here, he, he always likes to mention to people that, that clients over the years, good clients, seem to find us. And again, that's kind of fortunate, because we're lucky that we don't have to spend a lot of time marketing and trying to attract work. The kinds of clients that we like come to us, and that's important, because we're, quite frankly, very picky in terms of who we will work with. And I can tell you, over the last year, working with Jeremy and his team, it, it has been a pleasure, and I know that all of you have had the opportunity to spend a lot of time looking at this book, okay? And, and I know there's a lot of information and a lot of detail, and quite frankly, probably 90% of the developers in this valley would have no interest in producing a document like this, because of the commitment that that includes, okay? And I can tell you, I have heard from a number of people over the years on the kind of projects that we're involved with, that they, they kind of get frustrated, other consultants, when they see this kind of effort, because it kind of sets a tone in terms of expectation. But we think that that is important, and it's going to be important in terms of the discussion tonight. Now, Mr. Gilbert and Jeremy are going to talk more about the details of this document in terms of the logistics of the codes and ordinances. What I want to do is just spend a few minutes focusing on design, okay? Because at the end of the day, for us, design is going to be so important in terms of this project. What we believe, and you know that this land is just marvelous, it's wonderful, we think that this project could be an absolute jewel for the community of Fountain Hills. A jewel. And you know, right on the other side of that mountain is one of our best-known projects, DC Ranch and Silverleaf, okay? And the beauty of this site and the potential, we think, is absolutely fantastic. Now, Jeremy touched a little bit about the economy, and I can tell you, Vern Swaback talks, talks to us on a weekly basis of what he always refers to as the new normal, okay? And what we believe, we are certainly not retail, real estate experts. We're designers, but on a daily, weekly, monthly basis, we're working with retail, sorry, excuse me, real estate experts throughout the country. And one of the things that we're finding over and over again, that the days of the big, large, custom, what I call subdivision, are over, okay? We are working throughout Arizona, throughout the country, looking at communities to how to retool them to make them successful. But I can tell you, if we think about places like Silverleaf and DC Ranch from a design standpoint, we were so careful to work with our clients to make sure that the product diversity and those kinds of master plans were diverse, that they had a range of products, that they didn't rely singularly on large custom lots, okay? And what we believe as community designers, community building, that that is so important in terms of place-making, okay? And, and Jeremy talked a little bit about Toll Brothers. I can tell you, we have had just great meetings working on kind of initial design strategies on some of the Toll Brother product, and I'm going to go over a few images, but one of the important things about that, and it comes back to this document, we think there's just wonderful design ideas, and in terms of architecture, one of the things we've spent a lot of time talking about is what we don't want to do is get stuck in the pattern that we see so often in the valley, in terms of, you know, the flavor of the week, is it going to be strawberry, chocolate, or vanilla? How that relates to, is it going to be a Spanish colonial design or a ranch design? What we want to do is we want to create timeless architecture that's related to the desert, okay? Really pay tribute to the beauty of this site. I can tell you, Jeremy and I and the team have walked every inch of this property, every inch. If you would see us on site, we have our jeans on, we take a big roll of packing tape, and we take it around our, the bottom of our pants, just to get ready for those jumping choya, okay? And also, of course, watch out for some of those snakes. So we have spent a lot of time on the site, understanding the issues, the opportunities, and how it relates to the overall plan. So I'm just going to spend a few minutes referencing some of our exhibits.
Okay, we have the mic for you, and our IT director back there is going to do the best he can to get this on camera, so that the people watching at home and later watch on Channel 11 will be able to see what you're indicating.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Okay, in terms of the plan, we've talked about a little bit the, the diversity. One of the things that we think is important in, in terms of creating great master plans is to create neighborhoods, okay? And the idea with the strategy is, we're creating a series of neighborhoods now that relate to the overall development, okay? Again, we are not real estate experts, but I can tell you, over the years, we have had a number of entities come into our office asking about the Copperwind property, how to make it work. One of my partners is here with me tonight, John Bernhard, who is also a resident of Fountain Hills. There's been many occasions over the years that someone has come to us and said, hey, how can we make this property potentially work better? And what we believe, one of the keys, is the potential for that expansion. Strategically, we think the master plan makes great sense. Now, if you look at this simple exhibit here, this is literally an overlay of the plan over Google Earth, and we think it's very telling. You can see the organization of the, the hillside pieces, where the greatest topography is, and how that's maintained, and taking advantage of some of these flatter areas for more appropriate development, that really emphasizes a series of neighborhoods. This exhibit over here, that you've seen in the booklet, represents the slope analysis, okay? Really looking at the topography on the land, and these greens and yellows represent the flattest conditions. Just like you can see in that Google exhibit, the greatest slopes are reserved for the future custom homes, and we're taking advantage of some of these flatter areas to create these new neighborhoods. This exhibit up on top, which is a, a visual portrayal of the townhomes, this was literally produced from a detailed grading plan and a three-dimensional model, okay? So while it's, while it's an exhibit, while it's an illustration, it has great accuracy. And for us, when we think about design, we love everything about this. The drive that comes through accesses, goes further up into the trailhead, the organization of the units, taking advantage of the views placed in a sensitive manner on the land, we think that this has great, great potential, okay? We've also spent a lot of time looking at the front entry, I think Bob had mentioned that. One of the things that we've seen throughout the country is the use of couplets, and we've done it here in terms of the placement of the, of the administration center. It actually comes between the divided road, okay? And we think that's a great solution, and with it, we've been spending a lot of time with the team thinking about the entry treatment, to create a unique, special, engaging, inviting entry experience into the overall development. And then finally, one of the other exhibits that we wanted to show, here is the trailhead, okay? And we've looked at the master plan for the trailhead, and we think it's wonderful, right? It, it kind of winds within the topography, it's got the trail system that we want to connect to, and we think altogether, this literally could be a great jewel for the community.
Okay, thank you. Any other presentation from your team? Yes? Thank you.
Sorry, you're stuck with one more presentation from me. Thank you. My name is Paul Gilbert. I'm 701 North 44th Street in Phoenix. I'm here also representing Jeremy. I'd like to, at the outset of my presentation, just give a clarification, if I might, Mayor. Will we be entitled to a rebuttal, or are you going to want us to put on all of our presentation now?
Well, you can, you can do some of your presentation now, and then the, the council will probably have questions for you as we go along, and then you could just come back up and answer, if that's okay. that's okay.
Whatever you want. I would like to then preface my comments by wishing to avoid redundancy, but Jeremy made a very telling point, and I want to underscore that, as someone who's negotiated these agreements for many years now. We have had a very professional, and rigorous, and thoughtful discussion with your town attorney, your staff, and your town manager. And what has resulted, I think, is a win-win plan for everyone. There has been immense, underscore immense, give and take in redoing the development or the settlement agreement. Incidentally, I was here for the original settlement agreement. At my stage in life, I measure things by my grandchildren. I had two grandchildren when the original settlement agreement was entered into. I now have 21, so time is passing by quite rapidly. But I really think that what we have before you this evening, particularly in the posture of the restated settlement agreement, is a very honest and thoughtful document that has indicated been a win-win for all concerned. Tonight, we are going to consider several things. A major item for us, as we reason together, is to consider the PAD application. Why? Why are we asking for a modification to the zoning that was originally placed on the property some 15 years ago? Well, I'd like to submit that there are four trenchant reasons why we are here before you with this PAD application. One, there are more people, as has been stated, who want less land, and some who want a turnkey lifestyle. We have been unable to cultivate and attract that type of important market for this development, and will not be able to do so unless this PAD is granted. There are, as also has been stated, people who want a large lot for a custom home. We can and have reserved an opportunity to provide the large custom home. So this is only 80 acres that we're asking for this modification of our total of over 400 acres in Adaro Canyon. Thirdly, and I think significantly, and part of what I'm talking about when I reference a win-win situation, is this also will provide an opportunity for a trailhead to have access through Adaro Canyon. Without this PAD, the trailhead will come to fruition, but one might have to wait a substantially much longer time for that fruition comes to being. And then, number four, immediately south of Adaro Canyon is the Copperwind Resort. Very fine resort, but a resort that needs more rooms to reach its potential. I might add that I am in the process, in the city of Litchfield Park, in Paradise Valley, right now going through some major resort rezonings, and all of them are facing that exact same issue. It's real, and it needs to take place. So those are the four major reasons why we're coming before you with this PAD modification. We selected the PAD zoning district, and I was regaled somewhat in detail by some members of your planning commission as to why. Well, we'll be very candid. We chose the PAD exactly for the reason that the PAD was designed. It offers, and we have done, and taken advantage of the flexibility that a PAD offers while simultaneously continuing to emphasize the quality of what we're proposing. Starting at the south end of Adaro Canyon, we border Copperwind, as indicated, and we're proposing a land use there that can accommodate 120 additional rooms. Should Copperwind choose not to expand, then these units could also be used as condominiums. PAD allows us to have that flexibility. Then, at this point, Eagle Ridge Drive will be on a divided road with our sales center located in the island. Importantly, the PAD, because we've had a little bit of a rigorous and frankly distasteful experience from our sales office on another project here, we've worked that out this time, and the PAD restricts the use of this property for a sales office and administration, and then it will be developed, or, excuse me, turned over to the HOA for the single-family and townhome units. Moving north, there is a 44-unit townhome product for those who want a low-maintenance lifestyle, again emphasizing the need, absolute need for diversity. These can be also single-family detached units. Continuing north, there are 31 custom lots, semi-custom lots, with a minimum of 10,000 square feet. That, simply put, is a succinct, but I think useful summary of what the PAD is all about. That's it. That's the entire PAD. Significantly, and I underscore this, the balance of Adaro Canyon remains in the use and having the density which was previously approved. So these are areas further to the north that have more sensitive environmental concerns and are better suited, frankly, to allow the additional single-family large lot density. Mr. Hall made the point, I wish to underscore it because I think it should permeate our reasoning here, and that is, the density we are proposing, which is an increase in density, but the density we are proposing is well below, again, well below, the one unit per acre and less than many similar types of master-planned homes in Fountain Hills. We've submitted a traffic study that demonstrates that the proposed streets and intersection function at levels that meets the town's very stringent standards. Now, we are also in agreement with all of the stipulations. If I might anticipate, we went through a rather lengthy hearing before the planning commission, and I think the single most important aspect of that hearing that was raised by the opposition focused on one primary issue and deviations or supplements of that very issue. It's traffic. So let's focus on traffic, because if this project doesn't result in an improvement for all concerned, then it doesn't work for us either. So you will hear tonight, and we were constantly regaled at the planning commission hearing, that there are 298 daily vehicles trips, which will be generated by the development of Adaro Canyon. That, members of the council, is an accurate statement as far as it goes. It is misleading, and I submit almost a false canard, to leave it just at that number. A closer look at these numbers, we submit, will demonstrate empirically, and I think very effectively, that it will, the traffic will have no meaningful impact on the surrounding neighborhood. Let's break this down. 364 daily trips, now remember, the total is 2,898. 364 daily trips are a result of the Trailhead and Scottsdale Mountains Estates subdivision, not Adaro Canyon. Adaro Canyon is already zoned for private property, and without any changes, would generate 1,698 daily trips as zoned. So now, the Trailhead can't open without access that will benefit the community and the neighborhood. So we subtract those numbers from the total vehicle trips, and what are we left with? Let's focus on that. The increase resulting from the rezoning is approximately 836 trips. Now, Eagle Ridge Drive is a divided road. The subdivision that is here in protest this evening, again, it's presumptuous of me, but judging from what took place at the planning commission hearing, it's a subdivision that will be affected allegedly only by the northbound trips, and the northbound trips total 418 northbound trips over a 24-hour period. That is not a significant number of trips, nor will it have a significant deleterious effect on the Cortebello subdivision. Also, Adaro Canyon will also have seasonal occupants, and the projected traffic numbers assume 100% occupancy. That will rarely, if ever, actually happen. In short, the increase is small and even smaller when considering the design of the road. Now, a couple of other facts dealing with traffic. This road, Eagle Ridge Drive, was designed to carry originally 15,000 trips. The total on it now is 2,898 trips. So it is a significant reduction over the road design. There can be no salient argument that the road cannot, does not have the capacity to handle the traffic that is being proposed. Furthermore, as originally planned, and I ask you to focus on this, as originally planned, Eagle Ridge Drive was designed to carry, again, 15,000 trips per day because originally it was to serve not only Adaro Canyon, but also Eagles Nest and the Mountain Preserve property, which consists of approximately 1,300 acres, that now has been sold to the town and is preserved and will not be developed. Therefore, the town bought the preserve land, Eagles Nest has a separate street system, and so the overall total traffic that Eagle Ridge Drive was originally intended to carry has been drastically reduced, and as indicated, the only increase that Adaro Canyon will provide, based on the PAD, is 418 northbound trips. We are absolutely confident that what we are presenting to you this evening is a quality project. It is a project that offers many opportunities for the town as well. I will not go into a lot of detail, but the restated settlement agreement provides an opportunity for the Trailhead to go forward. We've worked very carefully with your staff in negotiating that. I think there was give and take on both sides, and we have come up with a very pragmatic and useful solution. And our bottom line is, it is a win-win for everyone, and we hope that you would concur. We repeat, we're here with a solid recommendation of support from your staff, and we are in agreement with all of the stipulations. We hope that you would concur. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you.
Members of the council.
Does that conclude your presentation? All right.
Would you like more?
That was the lawyer's short version. With that, I will open the public hearing, public hearing to receive comments on Resolution 2014-07, a proposed minor amendment to the Town of Fountain Hills' general plan 2010 to revise land use and increase the number of dwelling units within the 80-acre PAD zoning district in the Adaro Canyon master plan residential development. I'll start with council members' questions, comments. Councilman Pichet?
Yes, I'd like to reserve my questions and hear what our folks have to say about this that have submitted speaker cards.
Okay. Is that okay, if we let the speakers go first?
Left, please.
Good. Okay. Then we will start with...
Mayor, we have 15 speaker cards, plus we have four additional speaker cards, who marked them that they did not wish to speak, who indicated they were against the project, and two of those cards were marked as Cortebello residents.
Okay.
So I'll read a couple of names, and then as we progress, I'll bring more names. Vincent Marcello, followed by Gerald Biscella. Vincent Marcello.
Biscella.
Okay. For any of you who haven't been to Fountain Hills councils before, we have our three-minute timer here. When you see the red light, your three minutes are up, and it's respectful to everyone who wants to get their three minutes in. Please, when you see the red light, finish your sentence, and then that's it. Okay? So we can get everybody in. We also ask, and I know sometimes we get emotional about, you know, this, and people are on one side or the other, so we ask everybody to refrain from yelling out, clapping, or anything like that. Okay? So we can just have a nice, quiet discussion.
Mayor, and you want them to list whether they're Fountain Hills?
Yes, and please list, do not say your mailing address or your actual street address. We just want your name and the town or city that you are from.
Okay.
Where you reside.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, council members. Vincent Marcello, and I am a Fountain Hills resident. I've just come before you this evening because of the Adaro situation and all that's before you, and I want to remind you of something that's not been talked about or seen in the paper, what have you. The Adaro Canyon was set and voted upon by previous council members, and was voted by the Town of Fountain Hills, public, to make that bond. We own that, we paid for that, and an agreement was reached between MCO and the town. That should not be changed. Your staff has to have something presented to them, and they go and work with people. But you have to understand, that was to be, to preserve the mountain views. That was our mountains. And what was agreed upon is the density at that time should not be changed, due to the fact that MCO now comes in and says, oh, the density of this should be changed because our profit margin's going to have to be increased because we can't sell lots. That's a bunch of baloney. You don't change something that was agreed upon. Now, if you want to do something, you have to go back to the public, who voted for the bond, which I paid for, you paid for, and you change that. If they agree to that change, then maybe you do this. But you just don't do it at the whim of somebody who wants to change the agreement. That's like saying to go to the Constitution of the United States, I don't like that amendment, let's go change it. Doesn't happen so easy, does it? That's what you're not supposed to do now. You should, I suggest to you strongly, you table this. Go back to the residents of Fountain Hills and say, do you want to change the density of Adaro Canyon for the benefit of MCO? And I was here 14 years ago when you guys all did this stuff, and you made an arrangement, but they're dangling the carrot for that stupid trailhead. That trailhead is only going to help about 100 people, 200 at the most, will use that. The elevation of that level up there, most of you people wouldn't even attempt to probably go climb it. Okay? So don't let that carrot sway you. Remember, the density was to protect the views of the mountain that you all look at, I look at, everybody in here looks at. Don't change the density. This is not a win-win for anybody other than MCO. This is no win-win for the people of Fountain Hills. Nobody. And the people who didn't want to speak, because they're in that Cortebello, they should be speaking. Tell them whose mountains you're looking at. Okay? That's where I stand. So please, if you've made up your mind, undo your mind and table this thing. Let the people of Fountain Hills decide, because they voted for you. You don't really represent, the council who voted for this back when, with the agreements, the original agreements, they should not be changed. If you want to go develop land with another developer, go to the other side of town, buy some land, and develop it. Leave this development the way it was agreed upon. Don't change it. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next up, Gerald Biscella, followed by Tom Ward.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh, council members, Mr. Buchanan, Mr. McGuire. I am Gerard Biscella, I'm the chairman of the McDowell Mountain Preservation Commission. I'm speaking on behalf... I'm speaking on behalf of myself, the other members of the commission, and Bill Myers, our former chairman. Since the creation of the preserve over fifteen years ago, it's been recognized that easy access to the preserve was critical. With the current restricted access to the preserve, the full benefit of the preserve has been greatly hampered. In the late nineteen nineties, the voters of our town voted to purchase the main part of the preserve. Additionally, the council voted to purchase incremental land when combined created the preserve in its current state. The entire project required an outlay of over seventeen million dollars in principal and interest for the benefits of our citizens and the many visitors to be drawn to the preserve. A road to Adaro Canyon and the preserve has been in the plans for many years. Dedicated funds for the already designed trailhead for the, in the sum of one point seven million dollars, has already been collected and set aside for the completion of the project. These funds will provide for the security building, restrooms, emergency exits, and parking lot. Access to the preserve has been long overdue. We understand that the passage of the settlement agreement and PAD will allow for the trailhead facility to be built. Passage of this proposal will finally allow our twenty thousand-plus citizens and hiking enthusiasts throughout the valley the chance to visit our town and experience what will surely be one of the finest hiking experiences in Maricopa County. Of all the options we have explored for access to the preserve, this proposal before you tonight provides the best solution that we have, we and so many of our fellow citizens have been waiting for. We urge you to vote yes on this pending development of Adaro Canyon and the McDowell Mountain Preserve trailhead. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Next, Tom Ward.
Followed by Linda Bordeaux.
Thank you, Mayor and council. It's great to see all of you again. I think this is a very positive development for the town. I, I find it interesting that oftentimes when new developments come in, the first thing we do is we find the negative of a development, when we don't look at the positive of a development. So I'd like to read a few things here. I always find it interesting how homeowners can be against new development. They talk about destroying the desert and what will happen to the wildlife. I wonder if they consider this when their own home was being constructed. What is the saying? Okay, I live here now, so close the door, no more development. It sounds rather selfish to me. I recall when Sunridge Canyon was being considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission in the early nineties. They were very concerned about what might this do to our town and how it would impact the wildlife in this area. Today, as a resident of Sunridge Canyon, I see more wildlife than ever. They wander around our house as if we didn't even exist. Sunridge was the first major development, and it was successful overnight, as other developments such as Eagle Mountain and Fire Rock and many others. As for construction, yes, there is often dust, but it must also be controlled, or the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality will issue fines. Is there noise a factor? Sure, but all we, all we know, all, all know that it is not a permanent situation, and it will go away. Town codes also set start times for contractors. Again, didn't this occur when roads were built for our own homes? This additional development will help improve economic development in Fountain Hills by supporting our local business community. As well, the town will benefit from the sales tax and the fees for construction. Recurring annual revenues will provide more stability for town budgeting. As for the hikers and the bikers, this development will provide trail access to a trailhead where they can observe panoramic views like no other in the valley. This provides the opportunity for the town to eventually construct a long-awaited facility with parking and water, restrooms, and other facilities. Thank you very much, council. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Linda Bordeaux, followed by Andy Bell.
Hello again. What was your name, sir?
I'm Tom Ward.
I'll just save time and say what he said. I'm pretty much done, in lieu of interest of town. I think it's a great idea. I think we need to bring some median home prices in. We need to grow our residential base. I'd love to see some more young families move in and take advantage of what we have in our town, and I'd love to get access to the trailhead. I'm not a hiker, but I would take advantage of what's up there, so that's it. Thank you, I'm in favor.
Thank you.
Andy Bell, followed by John Bernhardt.
And don't forget to state your town or city where you're from. Andy, from Fountain Hills.
Thank you so much for telling everybody. I'm actually up here for a very positive comment about what we heard and how much effort has gone into developing this area. I have a background, education, and work experience in city planning and town planning, et cetera. They have really gone beyond what any of our existing developments ever went through to get passed through our council. What I'm really impressed about, and, and I'll be very short, is the fact that Toll Brothers did D.C. Ranch. If you've ever driven through there, that is an area that you had to have imagined it as completely covered by, oh, natural life and beautiful terrain. But the way they've done their roads and their development, they know what they're doing. And therefore, I'm giving a yes, I'm very much for this, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Andy.
John Bernhardt, followed by Sylvia Rappaport.
John Bernhardt, Fountain Hills resident, in fact, close proximity to this project. I live right across the street, right across Palisades. My wife and I are twenty-four-year residents of Fountain Hills. Both of my children attended the Montessori preschool, and one will be graduating with the class in two thousand fourteen next month. I've a vested interest and great pride toward Fountain Hills. I'm also a partner at Swaback Partners, the planners involved with the Adaro Canyon Plan. I'm an architect, so my direct involvement on this project's been limited. However, based on my passive involvement, I enthusiastically support the proposed adjustments. Through Swaback Partners, I've had the opportunity to work directly with some of the town's finest residents on the Fountain Hills downtown plan. This plan continues to be referenced and relevant today. Among the representatives that participated in creating the vision plan, most of whom volunteered their time, were council, council members, some of which continue to serve the community as council members today. Swaback Partners has been fortunate to be associated with clients that have established reputations and a proven commitment to quality and community. MCO is among the organizations that Swaback Partners has had a longstanding relationship, and the Town of Fountain Hills as a whole is a testament to MCO's commitment to community. Past projects with MCO date back to preparing what I believe were the town's first design guidelines, as, as well as the initial master plans for Eagle Mountain and Fire Rock. While these are among several of Fountain Hills and MCO's exceptional projects, Jeremy has ref, referred to Adaro Canyon as the crown jewel. The requested adjustments to, to Adaro Canyon is in response to current development standards that acknowledge the value of residents of more diversity in a neighborhood, providing the opportunity for family and friends of different spatial needs and economic capabilities to be neighbors. With this request, Adaro Canyon will be consistent with the density of Fire Rock and Sunridge Canyon. I've been a resident longer than either of these developments have existed, and my experience suggests that these are good communities, and neither have been associated with traffic or noise problems, a fear that's been voiced by a concerned citizen. Additionally, I've observed Copperwind Resort's struggle since it was built in nineteen ninety-nine. Much of that struggle can be attributed to the limited number of rooms available. The proposed Adaro Canyon Plan provides an opportunity for Copperwind to increase the number of rooms and subsequently improve the potential for a successful resort. That alone is reason enough for my enthusiastic support of this request. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, Sylvia Rappaport, followed by Art Berger.
Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Sylvia Rappaport. I'm a resident of Scottsdale, Cortabella, and I'm also a member of the Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce, and I am not in favor of the proposed rezoning of Adaro Canyon. Additionally, a petition with sixty-six signatures from Cortabella residents opposing the project can be found in your town council meeting packet. I want to recap the concerns of the Planning and Zoning Commission. As was already stated, the commission would not endorse the proposed rezoning plan. The commission expressed particular concern about the following. Number one, hotel in a residential district. Number two, height of the hotel condos. Thirty foot is the max. MCO wants forty feet. Number three, lack of firm start dates for Phase Two of the project and assurances of completion. Number four, lack of a second public vehicular access road. Number five, granite chip trail versus concrete sidewalk beyond the end of Phase One to the actual trailhead. Number six, cut and fill roadbeds. Number seven, MCO's refusals, that's plural, MCO's refusals despite repeated requests to commit to plating Phase Two as large lots. This is a big darn deal. I also want to note that no one spoke in favor of the development at the planning and zoning meeting, which I attended, except the chamber and some trail supporters. This is an opportunity for you, council, and for MCO to restore trust and act with integrity. Why is the town council willing to approve this increased-density rezoning without the endorsement from the Planning and Zoning Commission? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, Art Berger, followed by Ron Christie.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Art Berger, a seven-year resident of Cortabella. Would like to make you aware that while Cortabella may be in the city of Scottsdale, we do pay fifty point four percent of our real estate taxes go to Fountain Hills schools and Fountain Hills sanitation district. Only fifteen percent of our real estate taxes in Cortabella go to the city of Scottsdale. When we purchased our home, we were well aware of Adaro Canyon. I have no problem really with Adaro Canyon. I don't have a problem with minor density changes. What I have a problem with is when we are looking at major density changes, and specifically parcel number ten, which is where the developer is looking to build a forty-foot-tall, one-hundred-and-twenty-room hotel with an undefined number of banquet and catering facility capacity. We've also heard comments of potential interest in Copperwind and this parcel being merged together, or a buyer acquiring both units, which would end up creating a potential of a hundred and fifty-two-room hotel resort with an unknown amount of banquet and catering facility, making it the largest hotel resort and largest potentially banquet catering facilities in all of Fountain Hills located in the middle of a residential district. I've been in the hospitality industry for well over twenty-five years. I worked at the Arizona Biltmore Resort for over five years. I'm not aware of hardly any resorts that are in the middle of residential communities that have a harmonious relationship with their residents. They may be a nice amenity, you know, but they do not have a harmonious relationship. The difference between someplace like the Arizona Biltmore and this is that those kind of resorts, Camelback Inn, were all there well before the residential communities were. There's a proposal here to add something after the fact, and that needs to be denied. I'm not opposed to economic development for Fountain Hills. I want to see Fountain Hills continue to grow. You have already two parcels that have been identified in Fountain Hills for hotels and resorts. They're not developed, nobody's doing anything with them. That's where hotels and resorts belong. In particular, there's a fantastic resort location just north of Shape Boulevard at Palisades. That's where the jewel of Fountain Hills belongs. That parcel has the infrastructure, it's got highways, it's got two four-lane highway, you know, access coming in. It's not in the middle of a residential community. I want to see additional resorts, you know, grow, I want to see the city grow, but please don't put a hotel accommodation anywhere within Adaro Canyon. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, Ron Christie, followed by Marvin Han.
My name is Marvin Han, and I also live in Cortabella. But the difference is, my rear of my house is on Summit Drive, which is the main traffic that everybody's talking about coming in and out. And I disagree a hundred percent with the gentleman here. If you go north, who goes south? What do you mean? You only go one way? I don't get that. It just don't make sense. And I like to look each of you in the eye, but because I'm this way and you're around, I can't, so I hope you look at me. We talked about neighborhoods. I'm your neighbor. I'm your neighbor.
I'm everybody's neighbor in the room.
I'm part of the neighborhood. But what about us and the traffic? I have here, he said, twenty-eight ninety-eight vehicles on Eagle Ridge Drive. Well, Sunridge Car, uh, Sunridge Drive carries more, but what about access for all the houses? They all, every development that was mentioned here, Eagle Ridge, Eagles Nest, Crestview, Fire Rock, each one of them have access, more than one access, access to main roads. They, nobody mentioned that here. What about us? Again, as I say, we're your neighbors, and each one of you have a responsibility to each one of us. So I hope that the council, before you add, will consider this. I too like more development, but not at the expense of a neighbor, and give it access. As Sylvia Rappaport mentioned, you're giving fire access. What about home access? We only have one lane each way, and it's terrible, and it is forty feet from our yards. So thank you very much for your time, and I hope that you vote no and reconsider and make them reconfigure. And that was a real big lie about only four hundred and somewhat how, uh, trip. It's impossible. I live there. Let them come in my yard and sit with me for a few hours. You will see, that is impossible. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Ron Christie, followed by Jane Turrock.
I am not sure if I'm Marvin Han or Ron Christie. I'm Ron Christie. I live at Cortabella. I'm mainly here to support the protesters of this action. I walk that hill every day up to Copperwind, and the cars that go by there just about zip you off the road, so I think you should really consider this traffic thing carefully before you proceed. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hi, I'm Jane Turrock, Cortabella, Copperwind resident. I do support the opening of the trailhead, but let's get the trailhead off the table here. The Town of Fountain Hills owns the right of way, so just remove the gate by Copperwind, use your allocated funds, and open the trail. But the original plan for MCO for a hundred and seventy-one homes detailed in the two thousand and one agreement is consistent with planning and zoning ordinance. As the first speaker stated, it is consistent with the two thousand and four and two thousand and ten Town of Fountain Hills general plan approved by this council. Everyone was and is on board, even the residents of Cortabella. That's the win-win situation. But now the developer, MCO, wants to double the density of this initial plan for economic reasons, and this is only Phase One. The Planning and Zoning Commission delved into every aspect of this rezoning request. They expressed numerous concerns, most critically, the lack of a second public vehicle access road. Adaro Canyon lies at the end of a dead-end cul-de-sac street, Eagle Ridge Drive. There are no public streets off Eagle Ridge Drive, only gated communities. No public bus is allowed on this street. There's nowhere to turn around. It's two point two miles into Adaro Canyon. It's two point two miles out on this isolated, narrow street. With MCO's proposal of multifamily units, houses, hotels, plus hikers on the trail, where does everyone turn around? Where do school buses turn around? Refuge trucks, emergency vehicles? How about an accident or a fire there, or a medical emergency requiring fire trucks, police, ambulances? Once they all get in there, where do they turn around? Is everyone trapped? The Planning and the Zoning Commission with foresight did not approve this rezoning. Responsibility and liability now lies with the mayor and this council. It's, but this time, you don't have everyone on your side. Is this ethical and is it legal? Please, consider the planning and the zoning concerns. Please, consider your own liability. If I were on this board and this plan was dumped in my lap for push-through approval, I would vote no. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Karen Ford, followed by Richard Strub.
My name is Karen Ford, and I currently reside in Cortabella. I'm here this evening opposed to the new plans for Adaro based on one simple factor, the noise. Most of these houses are so close to this road. We basically purchased these homes for outdoor living in backyards, and I'm afraid... We basically purchased these homes for outdoor living in backyards, and I'm afraid with what I'm going to see in this increased density, my quality of life, my enjoyment of my yard disrupted by what is about to happen. So I ask each of you, what would you do to eliminate and reduce this concern? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Richard Strub followed by Dean Weber.
Thanks for letting me talk to you, Richard Strub. I'm from Cordabella. I'd like to take a step back and simply speak of fairness as it relates to the request by MCO to change its density plans for Adaro Canyon. So I was wondering, when the 2008 financial collapse hit this country, were you affected? When the housing bubble imploded, did you lose value on your homes? When you had expectations of a particular financial returns on your assets, did you have to readjust your parameters and figure out how to live and/or retire in this new economy? And try as you might, were you able to do anything to dramatically change what was happening to you? Were you able to change the impact upon your family? Do you know of foreclosures, evictions, or even bankruptcies? And were those unfortunate situations changed because the people being affected were hurting and needed to have changes made to lessen the pain that they were suffering? Right, I didn't think so. As individuals, we were not able to do much to change what happened or how we were affected. At the present time, MCO is facing these same difficulties. As we dealt with financial hardships in the past years, MCO is facing similar concerns. Apparently, they can't make the same profits or capitalize on the same real estate development forecasts that they expected in 2008 or earlier. Times have changed, and the conditions have altered. MCO must now face the same reality that the rest of us have already experienced. It appears that MCO feels that they should still be able to realize the same expectations with Adaro Canyon that they've always envisioned. They don't feel that they should have to accommodate to the changed real estate market and suffer lessened financial opportunities. Most of us as individuals have faced these consequences and suffered through whatever difficulties confronted us. Why should MCO get any special treatment? MCO doesn't want to make less money or realize a diminished property development, and to accomplish this, they would like to change the rules. They would like to be treated differently. They would like to bypass the difficulty that the rest of us could not avoid. I don't see how this is fair. We couldn't avoid our financial losses because we had no ability to even consider changing the rules. Why is it proper or equal for MCO to ask that the rules be changed so they can still make similar profits and enjoy the same anticipated gains and find the same expected success with their Adaro Canyon project? Why are they allowed to simply change the rules and ask for a different density proportion that was already agreed upon? The rest of us couldn't do that. Why is it fair for them to ask for special treatment? Especially when this special treatment or changing of the rules that they want will significantly impact the quality of life and the enjoyment of many others who made decisions and investments based on secure promises and anticipated results. I don't mean to whine, but it's just not fair. It seems to discriminate against the rest of us. And just finishing, considering the three different requests refused by MCO at the prior meeting, it would seem quite possible to me that when Phase Two is considered, MCO might once again ask you to change the rules for them. And thanks for listening.
Thank you. Dean Weber, and the last card is Alan Axelson.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Dean Weber. I reside in Scottsdale at Cordabella. Tonight, I represent not only myself, but 75 Adaro Canyon neighbors who are deeply concerned about this massive rezoning. The Fountain Hills Town Council has tremendous power. Upzoning a parcel of land is the most significant concession that a developer can achieve to increase the value of their property. If this rezoning is approved, there will be two clear winners, and unfortunately, a clear loser. Who are those winners? Well, MCO, of course. They can back out of their previous plans and assurances, and in return, they are rewarded with this massive windfall. This despite the fact that hundreds of neighboring property owners relied on their representations. The second winner, the Town of Fountain Hills. The Town of Fountain Hills can backtrack on their longstanding commitments, their general plans, their zoning rules, their subdivision ordinances, and then they get their development fees from Adaro perhaps five years earlier than was previously expected. Again, despite the fact that hundreds of the neighboring property owners relied on their representations when they made their investments in their homes. I said there was a loser. Who will bear the burden of all this backpedaling and broken promises? Who will bear the burden of all this backpedaling and broken promises? Well, I guess we already know the answer to that question. Members of the council, you have the chance to make this right. It can be a challenge to look up to your ideals and values. It's not often a town's character is put on such public display as it is tonight. I've met many of you over the past few weeks. You are a smart and capable group. This is the time to use your intelligence, your influence, and your authority to come up with a solution that is fair to all the parties. It was hard to listen to the presentations tonight. Not a single one of the developers' presentations spoke to the issues. When 65, 75 people come, you'd think they would at least address our issues, but nobody made any effort. Not a single effort was made. I trust you'll find a way to make that happen. Thank you very much for all your time tonight, listening to everybody that spoke. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alan Axelson.
Alan Axelson, Cordabella, Scottsdale. I'm going to bring up a point that hasn't been brought up before, and that's because I've lived in the Cordabella area for some time and have had four water main breaks that have collapsed roads within the last four years. Two on Palisades, two Sunridge Canyon, one very recently in Sunridge Canyon. The road Eagle Ridge is just extended up into Adaro Canyon. I'm not against that. When we built our home in Cordabella back in 2000, we knew Adaro Canyon was coming with a certain density population. What I didn't realize at that point in time, because I'm from the Midwest, was the susceptibility of the construction of water mains and the roads and the collapsing. What happens when the road collapses due to a water? Not a matter of if a water main break will happen, but when it happens, because it will happen. I come from a background that is hope for the best, plan for the worst. When that water main breaks on Eagle Ridge, what are you going to do about the trapped residents up in Adaro Canyon? How are they going to get out? Where is that second public access? You, city council, you have great power. You can hold that one issue of a second access into Adaro Canyon to MCO for their development. But at this point, that's not really been an issue that MCO has talked about, but it is a major issue. The higher density, the higher the density that comes in Adaro Canyon, the more people that'll wind up getting trapped in Adaro Canyon when that main, water main breaks and the road collapses, because it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. What legacy do you want to leave for the people in Fountain Hills, especially for the people in Adaro Canyon? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is that the last one? Your last card. I'm going to call a 10-minute break. 10 minutes, okay?
Can everybody take your seats, please? And we'll go on. Our public hearing is closed. And we are now going to go to council discussion. Anybody like to start off? All right, Councilmember Elke.
Thank you. Just a few questions. Thank you. It's nice to see so many people coming out this evening. Obviously, it's a very hot topic, I guess, for lack of a better term. And as Ms. Bordeaux stated earlier, normally, I think, we have maybe two or three of you out there, so it's nice to see a packed house. Thank you for coming out. I wanted just to address some of these questions to staff. Just a few of the things that were brought up that I'd like to at least kind of run through. And maybe I'll just go in the order backwards, the one that's a little more recent, if I could. Andrew, with respect to, there was a gentleman that came up and spoke about a water main break, if there was a water main break, the danger, perhaps, the risk to residents that are going to be in Adaro Canyon. Can you speak to that, as well as access and other roads going in or out of Adaro Canyon?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Elke, there are actually three access points that go in and out of Adaro. Only one of them is open on a regular basis, the other two are emergency access points. If you'll recall, a while back, the Viola Linda access was a second regular access through there until the City of Scottsdale's general plan amended out that access point. Now, that's emergency only. So if we had, we use the water main break example, if it were the kind of break that took out the whole road and you couldn't use half or the other half. If it were on the lower portion, the Viola Linda exit would be available for those emergencies. If it were further up the road into the cul-de-sac region, the one thing that the planning zoning commission didn't have in its possession that you all have had, and we've had lengthy discussions, is that the settlement agreement requires MCO to maintain, to construct it to our fire truck standards, an emergency access into Eagle's Nest. And so it accesses into Eagle's Nest parcel two. It's the last unplatted one, so the road right now is certainly not in any condition that anybody could use, but that is the requirement, that we be able to get fire vehicles up there, and that could be used in the event of that kind of incident where you had to exit out the back. So the two emergency access points are still preserved like they were in 2001. Actually, in 2001, Viola Linda was more open than it is now. And the regular in and out is still handled by Eagle Ridge Drive exclusively.
Correct. The second one that was addressed was with respect to the height of the condos or the hotel at Copperwind. There was a discussion about previously being 30 feet, now the request by MCO being 40 feet. Can you speak to that as well, and to what the original agreement was?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Elke, it's my understanding that the current approvals for Copperwind allow for heights to 40 feet. We haven't, I haven't gone back and verified that independently, but that's my understanding from staff. Its current constructed height is at 30.
Okay. So prior to this proposal, your understanding is that Copperwind had previous approval to go to 40 feet?
I believe that's correct. They also have some expansion approval that's currently on the site, but I can't recall that far back to give you details. I just recall that there was a rezoning case many, many years ago addressing that issue.
Okay. The next, there was a couple of speakers, I think, that came up to discuss P&amp;Z's lack of a recommendation, or can you speak to that, and what the P&amp;Z process, and what that means as far as the council, how they see that as a recommendation?
Yes, this one's more of a matter of history than anything else. Long ago, when this was a very common occurrence at P&amp;Z and council meetings, when we had packed houses, there were times when P&amp;Z and council weren't on the same page. And so the code was amended to provide a provision that in the event that something was held hostage by P&amp;Z, after a certain period of time, would move forward to the council with a recommendation of denial. Oddly enough, the kind of circumstance that happened at P&amp;Z where there just wasn't a recommendation, wasn't really contemplated, but got caught up in the same rule. So that if there is no recommendation, 60 days following that first hearing, it'll be forwarded automatically to you all with a recommendation for denial. So because there was no continuation of that hearing, we got outside the 60-day period, and it came to you automatically.
All right. Mayor, I've got a couple more, if I may continue.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. Can you speak to, Andrew, the trailhead timeframe? There's, I know there's some thoughts or ideas out there as far as when that's going to take place. Can you speak to those, to that language?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Elke, there are a number of different things that are being discussed in terms of access that I think are really describing several different things. Residents are absolutely correct. It's always been the town's contention that the platted right-of-way for Eagle Ridge Drive today allows access into that area because the town has title to that road because of the plat dedication. That's been our position. MCO's disagreed with that, and we've never really decided it was worth the fight to go and test that. However, with the understanding of the everyday hiker, that right-of-way and where people generally hike today, while mostly trespassing across MCO's property, is not the same. The roadway that's up there today that we all refer to as the Jeep Trail is in and out of that right-of-way, to the point where if you walk the Jeep Trail, you would leave and go on the private property in a number of different places. So it's never really been appropriate to view that as instant access. Even with the current agreement, and the settlement agreement presently doesn't address what do you do in the interim period. The 2001 agreement was entered into after suddenly three lawsuits and a property exchange. It didn't ever contemplate we were going to be here 13 years later with nothing built on the Adaro Canyon side. It didn't contemplate at the time that Adaro Canyon would be built second. So a lot of things that we understand about that agreement are done in hindsight, and it really is difficult to put it in today's perspective. Foot traffic access into the preserve is done in a number of different places. And under the new agreement, would be allowable under, along the new platted right-of-way for Eagle Ridge Drive, as soon as that right-of-way has been platted. So if there was a gap in time, if MCO perhaps came back and said, "We're not going to be under construction for two years, a year, whatever it is," the town could decide to go in after the final plat was recorded, and mark off the right-of-way and put a foot path up there. The understanding is, of course, that that foot access would be either truncated or removed once they went to construction, because we obviously don't want people walking where they're building a road. So the first access issue is not really immediate, but pretty darn close to it, but it would only be temporary access from the current edge of the right-of-way and up through whatever trail would be constructed. The second kind of access that's been talked about quite a bit in the papers and otherwise is access to the trailhead. Now, access to the trailhead, if we're talking about access to utilize the trailhead in the way it's going to be designed and built, that won't happen for a while. Even under the best circumstances, MCO's construction of the roadway to get you to the trailhead is a couple of years out. Now, ideally, the trailhead could be done and ready at that point, but I think that the town's staff concerns are that construction simultaneously is going to be very, very difficult to do. So I think it's more realistic to think in the two- to three-year range before the trailhead could be available. So there isn't an immediate access to that trailhead with this development. There is a better understanding of the potential timing of access to it with this development. That's really the only difference. If MCO does not avail itself of development within the time period between now and 2020, they are no longer allowed to phase the road. So we've got triggers in the agreement in two different ways. We've got the fail-safe, town can take access via foot, or we have the, you have to get going and get construction done prior to that date in 2020, or you go back to build the road with, all the way to the top with the very first permit. So the give is a give for a limited period of time to try and allow for development to get going. If it doesn't get going, though, the town has some fallback positions.
All right. I have just one last one, Mayor. I think it probably, it's going to be a staff member. I'd just like to have someone speak to the traffic, the numbers, and what's going to be anticipated if this is approved. I don't know if that's going to be Paul Moot. Thank you, Paul. Paul, if you could, if you could speak to what was...
Sure.
...anticipated, and then what's under the current proposal.
Yeah, Mayor Kavanagh, Councilmember Elke, I was actually checking off, as Mr. Gilbert was saying, his numbers, and they were, they were correct. The way Adaro Canyon currently sits today, there was 1,698 trips just for Adaro, and there were 239 trips for the trailhead, and that's a total of 1,937 trips with Adaro and the trailhead. With the proposed PAD, the trips went to 2,534, plus 240 for the trailhead. They just rounded it up from 239 to 240, plus 124 for the small 13-lot Scottsdale subdivision, which was actually platted by Scott, the City of Scottsdale, in 2004, so it didn't exist in 2001, when the original study was done. So Mr. Gilbert was correct. If you just look at Adaro Canyon, there was 1,698 trips versus the proposed 2,534 trips just for the Adaro Canyon portion with the PAD. There's 836 additional trips, or 49 percent more traffic. Now, if you want to talk about how many go north and how many come south, whoever comes in has to go out, but they are separated by a median on the other side of the road. And I think that was the point that Mr. Gilbert was making.
And actually, you anticipated my next question. I was just going to ask, there was a gentleman that said, "Well, if you go north, you've got to come south," or vice versa, so.
Correct.
Okay.
Unless you're going east.
Unless you're going east, yeah. Then you've got to go west, or south, or something. That's all I, I have it this time, Mayor. Thank you.
That's good. I think you hit a lot of the points that a lot of people were making notes on.
I had a few questions.
All right.
Very good, thank you. This evening, in taking my own notes, I've heard reference to P&amp;Z a number of times, the P&amp;Z hearing. Also, I've heard reference to the 40-foot height that is in the new plan, and I've also heard a lot of information, or at least concerns, about room capacity at Copperwind. We're talking about the fact that hotels in the middle of residential areas typically are something not, not, people don't look at or do. There is a hotel in the middle of a residential area. I mean, it is there, it does, it does exist, so I need to take that into consideration. So addressing those that I heard most frequently this evening, just a few questions that I have in that regard, and then I'll leave it open for other questions that might be out there. With respect to P&amp;Z, and I've had an opportunity to speak to the P&amp;Z folks after their ruling, and there was a whole host of reasons why they voted the way they voted, and I'm certainly not going to, not going to get into that. They voted what they voted. It was 3-3. But I'm curious to know, when they voted, and the time that they voted, I know I personally did not have a complete development agreement, and I'm wondering if they had a complete development agreement when they made their ruling, which was a 3-3 tie. Andrew, can you address that, in that you've been intricately involved with the development agreement?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Religie, there, the P&amp;Z hearing was in February, I believe, and at that time, there was no development agreement that they could actually look at that would have flushed out even a quarter of what the details are today. So I think that it would have been, whatever information they would have had about the development agreement at the time, or settlement agreement, is, I guess, more technically what we're talking about, it wouldn't have been sufficient to give them enough information to understand how it impacted some of those issues, like emergency access and other things that are dealt with in the agreement.
Very good, thank you. And I'm not saying that, looking at the current agreement, they wouldn't vote the same way, but it's just, they didn't have all the information they had when they had that vote, and I have to consider that when I, when I review their, well, actually, it was really a lack of recommendation, but as a result of their hearing, that 3-3 deadlock. I guess someone was absent that evening. It's kind of ironic, we're at 6:00 this evening, so look out. We have, I mentioned 40 feet and capacity. We've had a gentleman spoke very eloquently about hotels, hotel size, so forth, and so on. And with respect to speaking eloquently, I've sat on council for eight years, and I've never seen, this is an incredibly emotional issue, and we had one very similar to this on the Elman property on the other side of town. And I'm not blowing smoke, but I've never seen a more professional group, more civilized group of people, articulate group of people present your case. And in some cases, just listening to a number of you articulate, I was thinking, "Man, are you an author, or do you write for a living?" And Dean, I had an opportunity to meet with Dean, and I think Dean has done a tremendous job representing your group. Now, Dean and I maybe didn't agree on everything, but I think we had a very professional-oriented meeting, and you're well represented in that regard. Mr. Rogers, I had a couple of questions for you. I think you can answer them, because I've asked you to do some research, and I think Councilman Elke was alluding to that. I think in my meeting with Dean, I even mentioned that 40 feet concerned me. So I went back and did some research on Copperwind. Actually, I asked staff to do the research. I can't take credit for the research. And also on capacity, and I know there's an ordinance out there. And also on capacity, and I know there's an ordinance out there. Where are we at with that? What was the final agreement with Copperwind in terms of height? What was the allowable height that Copperhead Wind was allowed when they built what they built, their rooms, et cetera?
From what I found in the ordinances and all the approvals for Copperwind, they were allowed a 40-foot height limit for the entire project. They had originally requested 40 feet for everything and then 43 feet for one of the buildings, but that was later cut down, and the ordinance that was signed by council allowed for 40-feet height within Copperwind.
So, when Copperwind was constructed, there were allowable 40 feet. Is that an accurate statement? I think that ordinance is hashtag 0304, so this was something that happened some time ago. The other question I had regarding room capacity, also in that agreement, wasn't Copperwind allowed a much greater density than they actually...
Not necessarily that same agreement. There's been a series of special use permits and modifications over the years that have steadily allowed Copperwind's density to increase. The last one that I remember seeing, I believe, got them up to where they could potentially have 132 units.
Okay.
He says 150, but I didn't find that one.
Plugging for later.
Okay, well...
The last one I found was 132.
I'm going to stop there for a bit, but once again, these are things that I've tried to pay attention to, the 40-foot, and I found it interesting that that had been approved for Copperwind. I'm very concerned about the growth of Copperwind and what's being requested, but at the same time, I'm understanding that there's agreements that have been in place in the past that allow 150. And there's been some comments this evening about what we may be doing or not doing, and I just wanted to make it clear that some of that is already in place and some of that has already, already been approved in the past, so thank you for that.
All right, go to this side. Councilman...
I'll yield for the...
I'll go with Councilwoman Dickey.
Thank you. Couple of people mentioned what I would consider process, like fairness, or, you know, making sure that everybody's getting even treatment. So, my questions are kind of about that. I guess specifically, someone said, you know, breaking the rules, my, or special treatment. So, when we go through an exercise like this and look at replat, you know, and rezoning and these kind of things, are they, is that something outside of the rules? And my second part of that question would be, if we did, if we didn't approve this, well, sorry, the, whether we approved this or not doesn't affect an ability to ask for Phase Two to be different, or that kind of thing, because I, I think it sounds like people think that if we approved this, it would sort of open the floodgates, but are the floodgates for them asking ever really closed anyway? I mean, they always have some sort of option, right?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dickey, the general plan, which you have a minor amendment in front of you tonight, and the zoning ordinance, both provide for mechanisms for amendments. They are not fixed in stone documents. Your general plan is approved by the council and ratified by the voters and good for 10 years. So, to not have mechanisms for adjustment would be challenging for most land uses because not many of us can figure out 10 years in advance for land use. However, the mechanisms are graded based upon what you're requesting. In this case, it's a minor general plan amendment because of the size of the parcel being rezoned or being requested for general plan amendment. The only thing different in this case is the size of the parcel and the timing. Ironically, this one is running almost on exactly the same timeframe as if it would have been a major general plan amendment, which could have included the entire canyon. So, there really isn't any difference from the town staff perspective between a minor and a major amendment in this case, other than the process that would have led up to it, and it would have been much the same as this, with a lot of public input, more input from the neighboring communities, but about the same as what we did when we rezoned in general plan the state land parcel a few years ago. And I say a few, but that's quite a few.
I'll interrupt you for a second. So, that, neither one of those required a vote, would require a public vote?
That's correct. The general plan is only voted upon, upon readoption, and then it's ratified by the voters. That's an every 10-year process. You all did that in 2012, so your plan's good for a little while yet to come. The rezoning process also has a number of different mechanisms for rezoning. Some are straight rezoning, you know, one category to another. Other, like the RUPD that exists on Copperwind, is a flexible zoning tool that was in effect years and years ago, you know, since I first started representing the town in the, you know, mid-'90s, that tool's been around. The PAD is a last-decade add-on to the town's code, but it's a fairly common tool found everywhere in Arizona. The only place they don't really use PADs is in southern Arizona, but they use specific plans. It's a little bit different. But it's meant for this kind of purpose, where you've got a unique piece of property that has special characteristics, that you want to make sure that you have control over things like design quality and other things that aren't built into your regular code. So, those processes envision that you're going to have amendments, and you're absolutely correct. Property owners can come and ask for rezoning. Any of the property owners can come and ask for rezoning. You can ask for rezoning of your lot if you want to. It's just a matter of degree here because we have far more lots than if one of us individually asked for.
Thank you. All right, Councilman Yates.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Andrew, I guess this is for you. First off, myself, as well as I'm sure all my colleagues are very cognizant of the will of the people. I'm a commercial real estate developer. I've been through referendums and things of that nature. But when we purchased the preserve, we met our obligation. Is that a fair statement, or could you elaborate on any of the strings that were left, or are there any strings left after we purchased it with regard to views and whatnot?
Well, Councilmember Yates, as with any other piece of property in Arizona, you're guarantees to what you see from your lot or what you buy. And we hear this fairly frequently at the staff level because people don't like the fact that someone builds the house across the street, but, you know, if you don't want the house across the street built, you got to buy it. That's the way the world works, unfortunately. The town didn't really guarantee any kind of views to anyone. It guaranteed open space, and they happen to be great views because they're really tall peaks and they're steep and everybody can see them. But the $13 million the town invested in that piece of property and the substantial donations that were from MCO to link up all that property really are separate and independent from any land use regulations. There's not anything other than the designation of open space on those properties that make them somehow protected. There won't be anything built on them unless they're rezoned or otherwise, and I can tell you that's not going to happen with those because they're, no one, no one's going to sell that property from the town, I would imagine. There is, there's also inherent in all these discussions is, you know, a bit of the underlying, what are people allowed to do with their property question that's always in Fountain Hills. And the only reason it's different in Fountain Hills than other communities is because of the hills. In most places, you can preserve views by just keeping people separated a little bit here. In Fountain Hills, somebody could be a long ways away from you and block your view just because they're higher, and that's unfortunately what we've dealt with the entire time the town's been incorporated. Not sure if I, you had a pretty broad question, so I don't know if there's anything else there.
But I heard what I need. Madam Mayor, one more question, and we broached this, and I want to thank Councilman Elke for bringing a lot of the questions up. But with the increase in traffic, Paul, I might need you back again, I apologize, and the added 800 cars per day, could you elaborate again on what that street was designed for? What is the infrastructure? What is the capacity? And what is the difference between the increase and the actual capacity that it can handle?
Sure, Mayor Kevin, Councilmember Yates. When we look at the design standards for roads, when we went back and looked at them, Fountain Hills' design standards different, or differ a little bit from Scottsdale design standards. The first, the first part of Eagle Ridge Drive, as you come off of Palisades up to Copperwind, is in the city of Scottsdale. Their requirement, or their design standard for that road is between 5,000 and 15,000 trips per day, so it's well under that. The Fountain Hills standard for the same road cross-section is 5,000 trips per day. We're still way under that, but when we looked at it, Scottsdale, Fountain Hills has a lot more windy, hilly roads, so that's why I believe back in the day, our standard was reduced. So, those are the two standards for the same road. We're still well below both of them.
And Madam Mayor, just two more points. Paul, thanks for staying up there. Originally, when Fountain Hills was master planned, and I somewhat know the answer to this, but what was the population that they were anticipating when we built the infrastructure and our roads and streets and...
Sure, Mayor Kevin, Councilmember Yates. That's well before my time. I believe it was in about the 70,000 population range.
70,000 people that live in Fountain Hills, and so the infrastructure was designed accordingly?
Correct. That's why we have such wide, wide streets in the older parts of towns.
Okay. And Madam Mayor, just one thing I wanted to share, as I mentioned, I have a neat job. I get to go to a lot of municipalities and work with them on economic development projects and whatnot, and the reoccurring theme that I, that I keep hearing is just this, is planning and zoning and economic development, and Fountain Hills is, and I'm not trying to give anyone any ideas, but Fountain Hills is very conservative with what we give compared to a lot of other municipalities. I was in Nevada a couple of weeks ago, and I'm not going to say which city, but literally every variance you can imagine, and they can change it with an administration passing. You don't have to go through this whole process. I'm not saying that's good, bad, or indifferent, but I'm just sharing with you what's going on out there. The market, the economy is telling us that things are changing, and these are some of the tools we have as a municipality to change with it. We all make these decisions based on the facts, and we kind of look at what's best for all everybody who's involved, but I'm just sharing with you, this is not an unusual situation, what we're going through. In Fountain Hills, among a lot of the municipalities, I won't say another one that I was visiting today, had all these other different tools that they had that they were saying, "We'll give you zero parking," or "height variance," or "zero lot line," all sorts of different things. This is, this is a pretty good, a pretty good deal that we've negotiated. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Andrew, this question would be directed to you. It was brought, the very first speaker spoke on the fact that this should be taken to the vote of the people, and to my knowledge, that's not correct. Is that right?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Brown, the, I don't even, I can't begin to remember the name of the case anymore, but at one point, I would have known it and snapped it off just like that. The Arizona Courts of Address referendum initiative, any kind of land use done by vote, you don't have the authority to refer something to the voter, the voters that way. You don't have the authority to ask for an advisory election opinion from the voters, and voters are not allowed to, other than through the power of referendum of your actions, initiate zoning changes or anything else. The, the only vote that's occurred on this property before was to fund the acquisition of property in the mountains, the bond elections. There's also, there was a bond election and there's a dedicated sales tax. Both are two components paying.
Thank you. I would like to address the 40-foot height issue. I had the occasion to spend a couple of hours in Adaro Canyon, and the area that they're talking about building rooms or condominiums is truly deep enough that it would surprise me if they, even with a 40-foot height limit, would have any of the rooftops peek above the existing ridge lines, unlike what Cordabella has now, where if you're coming up Palisades, you can see them for miles and miles. It almost looks a little bit like, like the big city life, where we really didn't care. I'm not sure how that all got constructed, but it did. But where they're talking about doing this is, I think, a very viable spot where if Cordabella wanted to, or I'm sorry, if Copperwind wanted to increase their size, they would probably take out, which I understand was part of the original plan, was to take out part of some of the golf, some of the tennis courts, and then stack them 40 feet high, and that would be a lot worse and a lot more offensive, but they can still do that on their existing property. Whereas if we tuck them away and hide them down a little bit where they aren't quite so offensive to the rest of the neighborhood, Cordabella as well as the residents of Fountain Hills, I think it would make more sense, other than tearing up tennis courts and stacking them 40 feet high. As far as hotels and residential areas, I struggle with that because all over the Scottsdale and Phoenix and all over the country, you drive through neighborhoods to get to the nicer hotels. Now, I clearly understand that some of them were built prior to the houses, before the residential's there, but the residential is there now, and I don't see that as being an issue to me. And it's, the PAD, the Planned Area Development, is, is something that has been put into force in the last decade, and in fact, I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission when we finally adopted the PAD ability in Fountain Hills, and it is specifically used throughout the state for changes in developments for this very particular reason. And it is a, is a, it's an avenue that creates the same situation, the same conversations that we would be having, whether it was in another area of Fountain Hills, or if it was an area of Scottsdale or an area of Phoenix, but they are doing a very legal happening, and it's all generated as, as their presentation from the change. The times have changed, and what they originally had visioned of something, just a 100% large custom homes, won't work in Fountain Hills. You drive through Fire Rock, and the very first thing you kind of come upon are the multifamily duplexes, the villas, which are some of the nicer properties in that part, in, in Fire Rock. And so, what I see, the presentation of the quote "community type atmosphere," I personally like. Now, is it going to generate more noise? Anything we do is going to generate more noise, whether we, whether we increase the population of Adaro Canyon or not, you're still going to have increased noise, and unfortunately, I will point out that Cordabella was built on a, on a fairly narrow lot, which forces the houses to the back of the lot, and yes, you're extremely close to the street. And that was part of the planning from Scottsdale, not from Fountain Hills, so you can't really blame us for that one. But as far as the traffic, it's, it's going to get bigger. It's change. It's the change that we're going to be faced with, and I don't see that MCO is asking for very much that they aren't, that they don't have a right to ask for.
Okay, Councilwoman Dickey, you have something else?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I wanted to touch a little bit on the idea of the trailhead and getting to that because I know that Jeremy knows that, you know, I have had a lot of frustration over the years because, you know, I would agree that when, you know, when you said, "Oh, Eagles Nest has sort of the same product as what this is, you know, Adaro as is," and that we didn't have to wait until Eagles Nest gets developed for us to do this if we approved this. And so, of course, that is a little frustrating for me because I am one of the people who have always felt that we had a right to go up there and to use that, that, that property and that preserve that our town bought, purchased, and voted to do that. So, nonetheless, I think that this offers us an opportunity to use that asset very well. I think you at least would appreciate that we've all done a lot of serious consideration on this issue. Dean, I met with you, and I was very happy to do that, and with the other gentleman, Vlad, and something that you mentioned earlier about who would benefit, you know, two benefits, and I think the way you said it was not to sound like a good thing, like, you know, they benefit and the town benefits, but I do think the town benefits. I think that, and I don't mean it just like from fees and our coffers and all that stuff. I think it's activity, it's a project that doesn't have a lot of likelihood of happening until, you know, Toll Brothers spoke to these guys, and Jeremy knows I'm not trying to do any... And Jeremy knows I'm not trying to do any big favors for MCO, because, you know, we've had our moments. But I certainly think, well, you know, I'm not running again. But, but I really, I truly believe it, and I'm sorry that the folks that are here think it's going to hurt them, and I don't, you know, it's not going to be overnight. And even at the actual capacity, those numbers of the traffic, I just think it's really a better thing to do for the majority of the people in Fountain Hills. And I think this project is a way to move forward and help the town as a whole and the community.
Okay. Well, I'm looking over my notes here and trying to find some questions that possibly weren't answered. As you see, the whole council was paying attention to everything everyone said, and they did ask questions that also answered some of your concerns. I had a question about the process for Copperwind to include the 120 condos. How would that happen?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, there would have to be a number of different things that would occur. The units would have to be built in conjunction with some sort of joint plan. We'd have to have a site plan that made some sense to the town for that to work. The property can't be built as a standalone hotel, so, without a special use permit. Under the zoning that it's being granted, a special use permit's required if it's going to be standalone. So you'd have a site planning process. There'd be, it'd be land that's entitled, so it wouldn't probably be beyond that. But I think we're a long ways away from that kind of arrangement. It's just, from the town's perspective, it would be administrative at that point. I don't think there would be anything else that would be done, unless they wanted to build a standalone hotel, then that would require a special use permit from the council.
Okay. Thank you. And I guess the only safety, of course, I was paying careful attention when they were talking about safety, and I think that question was asked and answered about the access evacuation. I know we got a letter about that, and so we know about that the access is there. And then there was some concerns about school buses, fire, I guess ladder trucks being able to, so, I mean, our roads are made, are going to be made for that, that there's not going to be any problem that you foresee like that with this long cul-de-sac?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I know that they didn't want to be there, but both the fire chief and poor Mr. Ott were there on most of the meetings, suffering through the discussions with us. And I know that for fire guys to be sitting at a table for that long, it was painful for them, and we could see it on their faces. The roads in Adaro Canyon are designed to the town's standards, modified a bit. And there is a strong desire from MCO to have a more, I guess it's a light footprint on the desert look to the roads, so that there aren't going to be quite as wide of pavement sections in some areas. But the fire guys were there to make sure that whatever was approved was going to work for them. And the design off the edge of the roads is meant to allow for a lot of that. But they were not going to be happy unless they could turn their large rigs around up there easily and get around, because in Fountain Hills, you don't just cut over a street if you miss the right address. You know, if you get dispatched to the wrong cul-de-sac, it's usually quite a haul to get to the right one. So they don't want to have to back up down streets. They don't want to have to do things that other vehicles like school buses would not want to do as well. Don't know, we haven't talked to the school district to know what their plan would be for this area, but we've got to presume that they'd have a school bus stop or two up here.
Okay. Thank you. I had attended the PNC meeting, so I had already listened to a great deal of your concerns. And I also, like many of my colleagues here, walked the site, not just looked at the plans, but actually walked it and saw where everything was going to go, where the 40-foot height buildings were going to be, the slopes, the new road. We all walked the entire site to see for ourselves what it exactly was going to look like. That's a lot different than just looking at on a piece of paper. And like my colleagues, we certainly appreciate all of your concerns, and we've taken all those concerns very seriously, and we hope that we've answered a lot of your concerns. And we hope too, though, that you would understand that the town of Fountain Hills, during our economic downturn, lost a good part of our population. With that, our schools are suffering from a lack of enrollment. We have had businesses closing here because our population is down. We saw a significant reduction in our state shared revenue, which doesn't look like it's going to come back anytime soon, especially with large populations in the West Valley growing, and then probably getting a lot more of the state shared revenue. We see that the smaller homes, while everybody likes to see bigger homes on, like in Fire Rock or some of those developments, and less density, the smaller homes might add more families to Fountain Hills, because they are going to be more affordable housing. And that's going to help our businesses, it's going to help our schools, and we do have to consider that for Fountain Hills. Access to our trailhead, as you've heard many of us speak about, is almost like a dream for people who have lived here for many years. I've lived here for over 20 years, and when we bought the preserve, we all thought we were going to go out there and start hiking on it. And here we are, more than 10 years later, and we have to walk about seven miles just to get to an access, or we have to have special guided hikes. This is a dream for the people of Fountain Hills, to be able to pull up to a trailhead and walk their preserve that they have paid for for so many, many years. And my kids are grown now, so they didn't really get to appreciate that. Now I've got a seven-year-old grandson, and, you know, he's going to probably grow up with the preserve, and he's going to have access. And I'm really looking forward to that happening someday. I also, from an economic standpoint, we want Copperwind to survive. Copperwind is a wonderful asset to our town, and if adding these 120 condos to Copperwind is going to help it to survive and to thrive, and it's, then that's what we need to do, because it's important for our community. And so I guess just while we certainly feel for your concerns, we hope that you could understand that I have to do what is best for Fountain Hills and for Fountain Hills residents. And I just feel that Adaro Canyon, in all of these ways that I've just stated, is good for Fountain Hills and is good for the residents.
Mayor? I'm sorry.
Did you want to add? I guess that's about all that I.
I'm sorry. I thought there was a pause there. I thought you were done.
Yeah, that was a breath. Go ahead.
All right. Thanks. Andrew, can you speak to the settlement agreement that we have in the packet and the attached exhibits?
Be happy to. Madam Mayor, as one housekeeping issue, the approval of Resolution 2014-08 that approves the restated settlement agreement, needs to have a condition upon that motion that staff and MCO agree upon all the exhibits. The timeframe between getting the agreement and final and getting here tonight just didn't give us enough time to make sure that all the exhibits are right. And I know that MCO and town staff have been working back and forth. We just want to make sure that we get those all right prior to the thing being finalized. So that's the only housekeeping issue we have. We're 90% there, but want to make sure we're 100%, and we certainly didn't want to make all you folks come back twice for another hearing.
Mayor, I have a motion.
All right. Thank you. I have to, let me go into.
Are we on item seven?
Number seven, consideration of Resolution 2014-07 as just presented.
Mayor, move to approve the minor general plan amendment as presented and subject to the stipulations outlined in the staff report, subject to final approval of the conditions between MCO and staff. Mayor, second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor six, zero.
Okay. Thank you. Number eight, consideration of Resolution 2014-08 approving the amended and restated settlement agreement for Adaro Canyon. Council discussion?
Speaker cards.
Do you have speaker cards on this item? Oh, I'm sorry.
Mayor, we have two speaker cards. Frank Ferrara, followed by Lena Belliner.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council. My name is Frank Ferrara. I'm a Fountain Hills resident. I'm also the president, CEO of the Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce. I'm here representing the chamber this evening, the Chamber Board of Directors, who agree that we should, that we should adopt, approve Resolution 2014-08, which is amended and restated settlement agreement for Adaro Canyon. The whole ball of wax is what I'm saying. You know, I look at that chart over there, there's nine projects, and guess what? I was here for every one of them, right here. Now, some of yous weren't. Some of you weren't even residents, and you were. I know that.
Some of us weren't even born, Frank.
That's another thing, Henry. God bless you for that. But anyway, where would this town be? I'm looking at this from an economic standpoint. Where would this town be if we did not have that development, we did not have that approval? And don't forget, every one of them, every single one and more, had the same set of circumstances, same concerns, same access, same densities. So if you want to talk about a good one, how about Fire Rock? For those of you that remember that one, that was a real, anyway. On April the 14th, the Chamber of Commerce submitted a letter to the mayor and council and town manager citing what we believe is the reason that we, the chamber, would like to see this project approved. We'd like to see it approved for many reasons, but I'm going to only take the economic ones. And the economic ones is that basically, as the mayor stated so well, we do need people here. We are not self-sustained. Our business community is not self-sustained. If this project is approved before it has person one, it's got to be built, so we're going to have a lot of folks working up here. And I suspect that some of those folks will find out that we have businesses here, and will spend some money here in our town, not accounting the fact that we're going to have some fees, about $7 million bucks is what I calculate, what we calculate. And basically, we're looking at it from the standpoint of economics. We would like to see this project approved in total, and we would like to see it post-haste. Please, let's not wait another 15 years. I don't have that much time. Anyway, for the Chamber of Commerce, we would like to see it approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
Lena Belliner, followed by Dean Weber.
Frank, you're a hard damage fellow. That's because I'm old.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. After listening to tonight's presentation, if there ever was a cause to celebrate Adaro Canyon, is it? It's a perfect public-private partnership. Recently, a Fountain Hills Times poll suggested that 90% of Fountain Hills residents want this project, and our elected officials, you, need to make these decisions based on facts, not emotion. And the facts are two major facts for me. The traffic generated will be less than one-half of the original design capacity. The housing density will be virtually the same as Fire Rock and Sunridge Canyon. And aren't they a beautiful example of harmony with nature? Visionary thinking, if visionary thinking was not allowed, Fire Rock, Sunridge, and even the town of Fountain Hills would never have been developed. Fountain Hills needs this project. The harsh reality is, for years, several hundred storefronts have been sitting empty for lack of population. And now Taco Bell, Stat Clinic, Walgreens, those storefronts are joining. The decay and the continued decline of our business base must be addressed, and Adaro Canyon is the start of the solution for our town. Fountain Hills residents must not turn its back on over $250 million in investment, many hundred new residents, and tens of thousands of visitors supporting our businesses, schools, restaurants, golf courses, and shops. Let's make history tonight. Vote yes, and then let's celebrate what can be achieved when public and private partnerships work together for the betterment of all, including our wonderful Scottsdale neighbors. Thank you, council members, town staff for working so hard, and thank you, MCS, MCO, for continuing to believe in this community. Thank you, Mayor Kavanagh, for your wisdom, stewardship, leadership skills, and for keeping this vision alive. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the record, Lena Belliner is from Fountain Hills.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm Dean Weber. I still live in Scottsdale, and I still live in Cortabella. This is really kind of a question for Andrew, and I know he's probably not going to address it directly now, but in the subsequent conversations, if you could just be sure that we flush this out. I looked at the revised settlement agreement, and I noticed in there, just one example, where the zoning administrator decided that a particular road was not a cul-de-sac. There are a number of items in there where, just by the stroke of a pen, the city basically made the subdivision ordinance go away, or made it inapplicable, or changed the zoning ordinance, or changed some of the rules and regulations of the town of Fountain Hills. So I guess my question is, is that appropriate? I think that you all should be thinking about that, and is that something that's assailable or is it not? Obviously, you're involved with it, but it certainly brought up questions in my mind that somebody could risk with the stroke of a pen decide, "Well, this is not a cul-de-sac. This is not a dead-end street." This rule, which we have, and it's in place, and for example, the general plan was voted on by everybody, and then the zoning ordinance and all those things, how can we just have a negotiation in a closed room, not in a meeting like this, where you have public comment and public input? Can we just, with the stroke of a pen, as has been done in that settlement agreement, can that be done? And is that appropriate? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Nope. Okay. Any further council discussion here on number seven?
Mayor? Make a motion.
Okay.
Mayor, move to approve the final amended and restated settlement agreement as presented, subject to the stipulations outlined in the staff report, again, subject to final approval of the exhibits by staff and MCO. Mayor, second.
Okay. Any further council discussion? All in favor?
Mayor, just clarification. Andrew, do they need to state that it's resolution?
Yeah, this was the one.
Resolution 2014-08.
Pending the.
Well, the stipulation's already in place, and I think the mayor introduced it as that motion, but for clarity's sake, it is 2014-08 is the current one.
Do you want me to read that again? Consideration of Resolution 2014-08 approving the amended and restated settlement agreement for Adaro Canyon. And a motion and a second on that?
I do have a question. Because I thought that originally that, Andrew, you had said that the 08, 14-08 was the one that had to be pending on the exhibits.
And that was included in Councilmember Elk's motion.
The first one?
No, and this one as well.
Oh, okay.
I'll speak up.
Anything else? Okay, then a motion and a second, and no more speaker cards, and no more discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor six, zero.
Okay, then let's see. I'm up to number nine. Open the public hearing to receive comments on ordinance 14-01, an amendment to the town of Fountain Hills zoning ordinance and zoning. of Fountain Hills zoning ordinance and zoning map to change the zoning on 80 acres from R 143, R 18, R 16, single-family residential to Adaro Canyon, P A D. Speaker cards?
Mayor, we have seven speaker cards. Ken Kabuchish.
Ken.
So we got that pronunciation right now?
I knew that.
Yeah. Um, madam mayor, councilman. The thing, okay, I gotta get this together. I'm glad to see so many positive people from Scottsdale and Fountain Hills. This is a very positive move on the meeting and talking about the muted, uh, things we have to cover. Also, I'm a chamber ambassador, MCO board member. We moved here from North Dakota in Ju-July 2013, and I ended up joining the Trailblazers and with Bill Craig. And walking the hills up on top, one thing that's really cool about it is that you see the land. And MCO does an excellent job of preserving the nature of the property. And everybody needs to really understand, one of the positive things about the town of Fountain Hills is, of course, the view, which is great. So in the town of Scottsdale, they have over 110 miles of trails, and over here, we have 10 miles of trails. So there's a lot of catching up to do, but it's a great partnership between the two towns. And so I got all my notes written up here and everything, but the town Fountain Hills has made a very major investment, and it's, uh, great to have an opportunity now to get so close to the ending of it. And I really do encourage the councilmen and also the mayor to go ahead and move forward with the investment, and for the people and for their future. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ken. Anyone else?
Bill Craig, followed by Vincent Marcello.
Good evening. I'm Bill Craig. Living here in Fountain Hills, I have been fortunate to become involved in our town as commissioner for the preserve, a member of the board of the conservancy, and in charge of volunteer trail builders of the town. Others have spoken regarding the economic, social, and other benefits of approving the development plan for Adaro Canyon. I want to mention further some aspects relative to the preserve. Our residents deserve the preserve. We are a town of active living people. In my capacity with the town, I have had a people counter on our Lake Overlook Trail. The count during the last two months has been 12,422 people. That is an average of 207 per day. We are an active living community. I'm sure that you have seen the number of active living people each day walking around our lake. During the last fair, the conservancy had a new banner over our booth, which advertised hiking for the first time. I cannot count the number of people that stopped at the booth as compared to previa-previous fairs, picking up our trifold brochure about the preserve and asking how to get there. Dear Nancy Walter, had to go in Saturday morning and print out more trifles for us. You are aware of the new trail that will link Scottsdale and Fountain Hills. The Scottsdale portion of the trail is being completed by a group of professional trail builders at a cost of $97,000 to Scottsdale. Our portion of the trail was completed by our active living volunteer trail builders at a cost of nothing to the town. In my capacity with the commission, I have looked for other means of obtaining access to our preserve. There have not been any. There was potential access if an HOA would have allowed access through their common land. However, a small group was so vehemently against access near them that the HOA board would not even bring the idea up for a vote. Approving the development plan will finally allow the trailhead to be built and give our taxpayers access to the preserve. We have paid for the preserve. We have paid for the trailhead. We deserve the preserve. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see Vincent Marcello. Stanley Rudin, followed by Linda Bordeaux.
I'm Stan Rudin. I live in Cordubella, which is in Scottsdale, as you know. And I'm the exception. I'm for the development, very much for it. Many of my friends and neighbors that are against it do so because of the added traffic, and I understand that. However, I'd like to look at the bigger picture. And the future of the area. Even though we officially reside in Scottsdale, we go to their Fountain Hills post office, we bank in Fountain Hills, we go to the library, we shop at their grocery and drugstores, and we frequent its many restaurants, notwithstanding the alchemy, which is, in my mind, the crown jewel of anyplace this side of the 101. We go there because they're closer, but more important, we feel like we live in Fountain Hills. And we really want this town to prosper. About two weeks ago, the Fountain Hills Times publisher, Mr. Krukschank, reported that five businesses had just closed. That's very sad. I believe many more are struggling, and have heard about many others that are on the verge of closing their doors. Unfortunately, I think that certain aspects of Fountain Hills is, is stagnant right now and needs the growth spurt that Adaro Canyon will bring. The added population will help businesses become more successful and will also increase the town's revenues, as you've pointed out, which are sorely needed because of our loss of population. I wholeheartedly believe that the additional families that will reside in Adaro Canyon will think like I do. They will love Fountain Hills, and they will do most of their business here and help make this a better and more prosperous place to live. In conclusion, I can't think of a single reason why anybody that resides in Fountain Hills would be against this new development. With that, I want to thank you very much, and I hope you vote unanimously for the new zoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last speaker card, Tony Valli.
Good evening. I'll be brief. Mayor, council members, my name is Tony Valli. I'm a 27...
Oh, another reminder of how short I am. Thank you. I have to do that.
I am a 27-year resident of Fountain Hills, an avid cyclist on skinny and fat tires. I am a steward for both the Sonoran Conservancy of Fountain Hills and the McDowell Sonoran Preserve. I am here in support of the sidewalk option that staff has recommended. We haven't really talked very much about that. I am, uh, extremely concerned, if only a granite path is provided, that we will have mountain bikers whom we want to use the preserve that will be riding on that trail, and I believe it will be incompatible with the use of hikers, walkers, people with strollers. I would love it if, in fact, uh, the Trailblazers would do, in addition to the sidewalks, a granite path. I don't know our municipal code, but I believe in most municipalities, bicycles are not allowed on sidewalks, so that will help keep the mountain bikers off. Um, so I think this is just, we haven't heard very much about this particular issue, and I wanted to bring a different perspective because I ride 3,000 to 5,000 miles a year. Most of it is around Fountain Hills, Rio Verde, Scottsdale, and in the park and the preserves. So I think it's very important that we have this access and that we have, we recognize that a sidewalk with access up to the trailhead with the mountain bikers is really incompatible with the use of having sidewalk availability for the residents in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No, Mayor.
Okay, so council want to make any comments or anything before I close public hearing? Okay, then I will close the public hearing. Number 10, consideration of ordinance 14-01 as just presented. Council discussion? Uh, any speaker cards on this item? No?
May I make a motion?
Yes, please.
Mayor, move to approve the Adaro Canyon P A D zoning amendment as presented and subject to the stipulations outlined in the staff report, again, subject to final approval of the exhibits by staff and MCO.
Mayor, second.
All right, now, motion is second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor six zero.
Consideration of a proposed preliminary master replat for Adaro Canyon. Speaker cards on this?
Yes, Mayor. One card. Roy Kinsey.
We've been waiting for you.
We've been waiting.
Well, I'll be formal first and say thank you, Mayor Kavanaugh and all of our council. I've got two sentences to say first, but I've got a lot more in my heart to say. Good evening. Much has been written and said in recognition of the MCO proposal to update the settlement agreement between you, the town of Fountain Hills, and MCO properties. I ask you to vote yes to approve the revised agreement. Speaking as a resident, I believe your approval will stimulate many positive actions beyond the growth of Adaro Canyon. Speaking as a board member of the Sonoran Conservancy of Fountain Hills, approval of the MCO plan will initiate further action to upgrade the Fountain Hills preserve plan for a public access. Throw that away, and I just got to tell you, I'm so glad I'm not last because it's been a real education. First, I thank this council. I was so impressed with your responses to the speakers before me, the ones who were concerned about problems. You really listened, and I thank you very much. Second, it's a good thing. I hope you vote yes.
Thank you, Roy. All right, I can't stop from clapping for Roy. Can't do it. Okay, uh, any, any other speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Any other discussion? Anybody want to do a motion?
I'll do a motion, Mayor. But, but before I do a motion, I want to thank, uh, Mr. Kinsey, um, ju-very, very quick. Thank Mr. Kinsey for all the work that he's put on the trail. And when I was elected to the council shortly afterwards, about almost four years ago now, I asked Mr. Kinsey to, uh, one, one marine to another, to take me out on the trails. And I'll tell you, even though I'm 40 years his junior, he out-hiked me out there. I had a hard time keeping up. I had a real hard time keeping up.
That's right.
He did. He kicked my butt. So thank you very much, Roy. Mayor, move to approve the Adaro Canyon preliminary master plat as presented and subject to the stipulations outlined in the staff report, subject to final approval of the exhibits by staff and MCO.
Mayor, second.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor six zero.
Consideration of the Adaro Canyon parcel one preliminary plat, 30-acre, single-family subdivision. Any speaker cards on this item?
No, Mayor.
No. Council discussion? No. Want to make a motion? You want to make it?
Sure, I'll, I'll make all five.
Keep going.
Move to approve the Adaro Canyon parcel one preliminary plat as presented and subject to the stipulations outlined in the staff report, subject to final approval of the exhibits by staff and MCO.
Mayor, second.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor six zero.
Okay. And that's, does it for that. I guess the only one thing I want to add, and I'm sure I speak on behalf of all the council, to thank Ken and Andrew and the staff for all the late nights and how much you all worked on this. We really certainly appreciate your hard work in making sure that Fountain Hills was well protected in this also. And we appreciate all the negotiations, uh, keeping us up to date on everything that you were doing. And, uh, this is, uh, this is going to be a good thing for Fountain Hills. So thank you, Ken and staff, and Andrew, of course, all your hard work. I'm gonna go on to, we've got another one. Consideration of resolution 2014-19 adopting the maximum amount for the town of Fountain Hills fiscal year 2014-15 tentative budget with appropriate direction to publish said documents in accordance with state law. Ken.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, something that's less dramatic but equally important. Tonight, we're, um, you, as you know, the, we're here to talk about the tentative budget for, uh, adoption of tentative budget for fiscal year 2014-15 that was presented to you in a public meeting, um, on, um, last Monday. The proposed expenditures for all of the funds are, um, $44.8 million. Resolution 2014-19 establishes the maximum amount of expenditures for the fiscal year. Subsequent to the approval of this resolution, changes to the budget can be made within the light on, but cannot exceed the number 44.8. It's recommended that you approve the budget.
Okay. Uh, any speaker cards on the budget?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Council discussion? Anyone want to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor six zero.
Just like that for 44 million.
Discussion with possible directions to staff relating to any item, including the League of Arizona Cities and Towns Weekly Legislative Bulletin, or relating to any action proposed or pending before the state legislature. Ken, Andrew, or Ginny?
Mayor, I, I would ask that we put this item, even though we probably wouldn't have it on our next agenda, that we do that in the interest of time. Because we usually only do it during session, unless you have something that you want to say.
No, I don't. No.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dickey, we, we have a discussion going right now with the league. They're going to take the recap show on the road, and so we'd like to bring it back at the time when they're there so we can discuss everything that passed, didn't pass, and otherwise. And in the interest of Councilmember, or Representative Kavanaugh's personal safety, you know, we're, we're happy that the signee died, even though he's at home injuring himself now.
All right, that's agreed with everybody. Then, um, can I get him? You don't have anything else, do you, Ken?
No, Mayor Kavanaugh.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, I was just wondering, our finance director's been sitting here for, for several hours. Craig, any, anything you'd like to say? All right. Well, thanks for sticking in there.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and Mark's still here.
Mark's still here.
Yeah, and the captain, and of course, our IT.
Who's that guy with the red tie back?
Mark is still here.
Concerned citizen.
Concerned citizen. Okay, and the press is still here. Thanks for hanging in, guys.
Deadline.
Yeah. All right, then, a motion to adjourn, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
None.
Okay.
Good work, guys.
You want some...